I'm Claude Rennium. My name's councillor Robert Parker and I'm the Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Welcome to everybody, you know, we've got members, excuse me, officers in attendance today, both here in the council chamber and also on Teams. The video feed of this meeting is being broadcast through the county council's website. So I'd also like to welcome people out there, members of the press and public who are watching our meeting online today. So it's a hybrid meeting, we're here and people can be involved online. Just want to particularly welcome not only our members that make up this committee, but also executive support councillors, councillor Mark Whittington on behalf of the leader of the council and councillor Hilton Spratt also here as well. We've also got the corporate leadership team, starting with Debbie Barnes, Chief Executive Andrew Crookham, Executive Director of Resources and also James Drury, Executive Director for Commercial. Okay, I need to begin by saying something about health and safety, an announcement, there's no fire drill. That's the first time we've had to say that for some time because it's the first time we've been in county offices. No fire drill planned this morning. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through reception into the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park until further instructions. The usual reminder about mobile phones and laptops being on silent. Okay, I'm sure you've already done that. If you want to ask a question during the course of the meeting, can you please raise your hand? And councillor Tom Smith, the new Vice Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, will make a note of those who wish to speak. Okay, so that's the beginning. Okay, so we move now to the agenda. Item two, apologies for absence and replacement members. Nick, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. We've got an apology from councillor Eddie Strangle. Councillor Peter Copeland is deputising. We've also got apologies from Mrs Machin, Perrot Governor Representative and executive councillors Martin Hill and Richard Bootroyd. And I can't see councillor Dill to sort out the jobs and things like that.
Yep, I can add to that, he's stuck in traffic when he phoned me from Bourne and he hopes to be here as promptly, he did hope to be here for 10 o'clock, but obviously traffic in the south of the county is beating him at the moment. Okay, so item three, declarations of councillors' interests. As you know, members of the council and particularly the board are reminded that you only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on the declaration of peculiar interest form that you filled in recently. Do any members wish to declare an interest? No, okay, that's fine, thank you. If we now move to item three on the agenda, the minutes of the meeting, it seems quite some time ago, the 17th of March, the last meeting of the old council. What I want to do is to confirm and sign the minutes from the meeting of the board on that date. And what I'd like to do now is to go through the item in question and ask for any comments about accuracy only on item three. So it may have page five at the bottom, which is the first page. Any comments on page five? If silent, I'll move on. Page six, minutes of the meeting of the 25th of February. Page seven, starts with consideration of call-ins. Page eight, overview and management board, 17th of March again. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Near there, page 12. No comments, page 13. Page 14. And finally, page 15. Okay, do I have a proposal and a second on the accuracy of the minutes? Thank you. Councillor Whittington, propose a second. Councillor Brockway, a second, thank you. Okay, can we now vote on the minutes? And we're voting on whether you agree that the minutes as presented are a correct record. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Anyone against? Great. Any abstentions? Okay, two, thank you. Thank you, that's the minutes.
I understand because I wasn't at the meeting, Chair.
Sure, I understand that, yeah. You were not present because you were not a councillor, I understand, fine, thank you. Okay, so we now move on to item four, announcements by the chair himself and executive councillors and chief officers. I just want to recap on the last part of the, excuse me, last council period because I attended the executive meeting on the 7th of April and presented the board's comments on a paper which was about the draft one council commissioning framework and it's relevant to our work in the future. I highlighted what we talked about, that we recognised that the development of the workforce, our workforce, was a work in progress and this was a pretty good piece of work that we were looking at. And I explained how it would probably operate when I went to the executive. The executive though did raise concerns around some of the language that was used and argued that there was a need for a balance between using Lincolnshire based businesses and the cost benefit of our one council approach. The executive requested that a revised version be brought back to a future meeting for final approval. This revised version is now being worked on and will be considered by us again on the 1st of July before going to the executive for approval on the 6th of July. That's as much as I need, I have to say in terms of my announcements. Can we move to the executive councillor announcements? Any executive, either Mark or, Mark on behalf of, sorry, Martin Hill, anything that you want to pass on from the leader of the council?
Thanks, thank you, Mr Chairman, I haven't got anything to report on the hospital, thank you.
Thanks, and Hilton, on behalf of Richard?
Nothing to report at this stage, Chair.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. That's the executive councillor announcements, okay. Three chief officers here, Debbie, Andrew and James. Any chief officer announcements, starting with you Debbie?
No, thank you very much, nothing from me.
Okay, Andrew?
Nothing from me, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. James?
No, nothing from me either, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If we now move on to item five on the agenda, consideration of call-ins. Nick, have we had any call-ins to consider?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. Item six, consideration of councillor calls for action. Nick, again, calls for action?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. Doing okay at the moment, fine. Item seven, introduction to service areas reporting.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask you if you possibly please have a paper, Chairman, because I can't access the internet.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for that. Okay. Right, so we've got some presentations, introduction to service area reporting, to overview and scrutiny. This is to give an overview, three presentations. Debbie, over to you.
Thank you very much, Chair, and welcome everybody to the first overview and scrutiny management committee. So myself and my colleagues have got a very short presentation just to do a bit of an introduction in terms of what we bring and what the role and function of the overview and scrutiny management board is. If I can have the next slide please, thank you very much. So as you'll know and welcome back many old members as well, but as you'll know, the overview and scrutiny management board brings together the chairs of all of the scrutiny committees and the function is really to very much make recommendations on the performance of the council to make sure that people in Lincolnshire have the best possible public services and to call us as officers to account, to make sure that we are driving improvement for our residents, our businesses and our visitors in Lincolnshire. The board clearly whilst having that overarching performance remit, also in its own right receives a number of reports on council-wide functions that don't neatly fit into one single scrutiny committee. And predominantly they're focused on what we would call the enablers to the business, so the corporate services that help our delivery services to thrive, which would include information, information management technology, people management, the corporate contracts that help with our back office functions, as well as our financial reporting. And Andrew and James will go into that in a bit more detail because they oversee and line manage those functions. Thank you, so we can go on to the next slide. So I'm sure you've seen this in the introduction, this just really summarises the executive scrutiny model and you can see there that each of the individual scrutiny committees all feed into the overview scrutiny management board who then report to the executive as well as the county council as well. Next slide. Thought it would be helpful just to summarise the sort of senior officer that are at the, that make up the part of the corporate leadership team. So there's myself as chief executive and the corporate leadership team consists of Heather Sandy, who's the executive director for childrens. Glenn, executive director for adult services and community wellbeing, which is very much the sort of adult social care and public health functions of the local authority. Andrew in terms of executive director in resources and he'll talk through what his role and function is in a minute. Andy Gutherson, executive director of Place and his functions that he line manages and has corporate responsibility for, for delivery of crosses a number of the overview, sorry, of the scrutiny committees because he is responsible for what we call Place. That's very much a lot of the sort of universal type services, from highways to planning, flooding, heritage, tourism. So he has a very large brief that affects, I think, each and every one of our residents in some way. And as I say, he touches a number of the different regulatory committees as well as the scrutiny committees. And then James Jury, executive director for commercial and James will talk through his function. And I really just want to say that the way that we all as a corporate leadership team want to work is we want to very much work as a team with our elected members. The council collectively, the officers as well as the members. If we work together, then we really can drive improvement for our residents and that's what our shared objective is. We want to work in a very open and transparent way with each and every one of you. Really want to understand the voice of our communities, which clearly you're able to tell us and give us that really important feedback so that we can truly understand what it feels like for our residents, our businesses and for our visitors so that we can, you know, drive that improvement that you want to see. And the culture that we very much want to work within is one of openness and honesty and transparency. We very much want to be visible, we want you to feel as though you can contact us and email us and we will get back to you on any issue that you want. So very much want to create and just set out upfront really that we want to work very much in that open and transparent way. So please, 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 anything at all that you want to check out with us, please do not hesitate to contact any of us at all. And then not strictly speaking part of the corporate leadership team, but who I line manage is Lee Cerdyfield, who's the, is a new post assistant director of corporate. And so he line manages the functions of community engagement, of communications and also policy. And policy is a new function, it's a new unit with a very small team that we're just in the process of setting up. It's something that the council haven't had before, it's a new addition. And again, I think that this committee and in particular, you know, the deep dive scrutiny work that's done, hopefully will make use of those new policy officers who I think will be able to assist members in doing a lot of work to understand what's happening across the rest of the country and across the rest of the world to help make sure that we continue to drive improvement. So that we hope that they'll be a very welcome addition to the council. Next slide please, thank you. I think most of you have seen this before, but just in case you haven't and just a bit of a reminder, clearly our workforce is our most important asset. They're the people that are in contact and touch, the residents and businesses and visitors of Lincolnshire. So you've got there in the top corner in terms of our wage bill and our own individual workforce is only about 23% of the gross spend. And that's probably because we are quite strong in terms of commissioning out services. So a lot of our adult services are commissioned out, a lot of our place services are also commissioned out. Although predominantly most of our children's services are delivered in-house. And you'll see that when you look at the sort of spread in terms of the percentage of where our workforce is across the council, which is just that circular one at the bottom left-hand side of the screen. You'll see that 31% of the workforce is children's and that is because predominantly we deliver the vast majority of children's services in-house. And that's very much because there is a lack of market, in particular with regard to safeguarding services. And that's not untypical across a number of councils. But that's really why there's a sort of 23% spend, which would be lower than many other councils. You can see the split there between female and male. Again, probably accounted for the fact that children's service is predominantly a female orientated type of service. But clearly we do need to do some more work in terms of attracting much more of an equality workforce across many of those service areas. And you can see the split there between full-time and part-time. You mightn't be able to see this slide, but this is just a bit of feedback from our staff survey. So just as a bit of a snapshot, 85% of our staff feel really proud for the work that they do. And certainly during the last year over Covid, that's come over loud and proud that our staff are really proud to serve people in Lincolnshire. 76% feel that they've got opportunities to progress in their role. 70% feel that we take a proactive approach to supporting their wellbeing. 76% have the freedom and empowerment to organise their own work and that managers set the conditions so that they can thrive and be the best that they can possibly be. But I think there is more work that we need to do to make sure that we do create the conditions so that our workforce can thrive and be the best that they can possibly be. And there are some areas, you know, 56, 59% feel that senior managers recognise and value staff contribution at work. Only 49% are satisfied with the amount of involvement that they have in decision-making processes. So more work to do, I think, in terms of staff engagement as well. And that might be something that the committee will want to look at when we look at the people's strategy. Just very quickly then, I just want to go through our corporate plan. So our corporate plan was agreed just over a year ago by the full council and it's our overarching strategic plan which sets out our five-year ambitions for our residents and our visitors and our businesses. And I won't read through our vision, which is very much about working for a better future. And it very much recognises that we can't work in isolation, we need to work with our partners to make Lincolnshire a better place for everybody. We've got four aspirations of what we want to achieve for our residents, our businesses and our visitors. So the first aspiration that we talk about is making sure that everybody has high aspirations. And pretty much we're talking about skills. So we want residents, Lincolnshire residents to have the skills so that we can have a flourishing economy across the council. Our businesses are able to recruit locally into their posts and that our workforce, that our residents have got the skills to be able to meet that changing economy. And this is what our residents have said about what this means for them. It means about children having good quality schools and education settings, having the skills to equip people to work in new markets. If I run a business, I can find skills. And individuals feel as though they want to be part of the growing economy and they need skills to be able to do that. The next aspiration is about the work that we're doing to enable everybody to enjoy life to the full. And this is very much talking about children having the best possible start in life and about people when they need support, either through disability, health issues or from frailty, that we able to support them to thrive and maximise their independence so that they can be as independent within their own homes as much as possible. And again, I think we do some good work in that, but we need to do, we need to do more to meet the changing needs of our residents. And our residents say that they want to feel part of a community that supports one another. They enjoy living in their own home and want to live there as long as possible. Got a range of leisure options so they can enjoy their free time, be healthy. And if they need some preventative help to make sure that they remain healthy, then it's easily accessible. And they can find the right home from the local housing officer in their local areas. Our third aspiration is very much about making sure that Lincolnshire is a thriving place and that our environments are thriving and now more important than ever, I think, in a post-Covid way. So we're talking about communities being able to be sustainable and to be able to progress within considered and responsible growth. So we want the county to be the top choice to live, work, relax, visit, do business and bring up a family. And when we went to our communities, what it means to them is they want to have more green travel options. And again, I think the last year has taught us a lot that we need to harness and move forward on. Want to be confident that local energy production is sustainable and supports the economy. Want to shout loud and proud about what Lincolnshire has got to offer. It's a great place, isn't it? And that people are digitally connected. And again, something else that's even now more important than ever in a post-Covid world. And then finally, they want us to offer really good, good value council services. And so ideas are very much about understanding our residents, knowing what they want, designing our services around what they want and making sure that that's accessible to them. So when we've spoken to them, they've said if they want to access council services, they want us to work seamlessly together with other partners. They don't want to be handed across from district council to health services. They want one person to own their journey and behave as if we are one organisation of public sector, so public sector Lincolnshire rather than a collection of different services. They don't want access to be a barrier, they want things to be easy to find. And they want to be able to support sustainably designed services around their needs and confident that we're making best use of public money. Some things we do well, some things we're on a journey with that we need to do better. And that links very much to the transformation programme, which is the next agenda item. So I'm now going to hand over to Andrew, I think. Don't, yeah, don't ask questions.
Anybody want to raise anything, particularly any new members here? This is what we're about, OSMB and as Debbie said right at the beginning, that we do cross-cutting things. Anybody got anything they want to raise? Oh, that's good, okay, thanks, Andrew.
Thanks councillor Parker and again echoing what Debbie said really, welcome, welcome back to the new committee. Very happy to be here in person as well after doing these for a year on Teams. It makes a hell of a difference doing it in person, so thank you for the welcome. So yeah, so Andrew Crookham, Executive Director for Resources. Tracey, if we could just move on to that first slide. So I'm just going to have a bit of a run-through how we're structured, where you'll see us and some of our key issues today. So this first slide sets out the structure and we're very much a directorate of two phases, I guess really. So following a restructure in the back end of 2018, we were formed in April 2019 when I started in post. So I've been here just over two years. At that point, Resources was very much focused on being a corporate support service, but one focused very much on support and compliance. And you'll see when James presents his area, there's a slight difference between the focus of the two directorates. I talk about two phases because the first initial carnation of Resources was predominantly around grouping our services into our governance activities, our money activities and our people activities. And that was the way that the directorate was running until autumn last year when I was very happy to welcome in the public protection function into the directorate as well. So a larger directorate now than when we started two years ago, but one very much doing lots of activity, which I'll just talk about. So I'll briefly talk about my role. So I'm the council's statutory chief finance officer, or colloquially known as the section 151 officer. So that's the role responsible to council and indeed the local taxpayer for the financial administration and affairs of the council. You'll see plenty of me at these meetings and in other meetings as well, talking about finance predominantly, but that's just a small part of my role. Another key role I've got for the council is I'm the council's senior information risk owner or CRO and that's the post responsible for information risk policy. And James will talk a bit more about the actual delivery side of some of those elements in his presentation shortly as well. But again, going back to the compliance and the delivery split, you'll see how that fits neatly together later. So as I said, we talked about the directorate originally being devised into governance, finance and people activities. So I'll start with David Coleman, who's our chief legal officer. Again, the post, another statutory post holder alongside me and Debbie as the council's monitoring officer, responsible for ensuring all that we do is lawful. David's area is split into three, three chunks essentially. So legal services, which deliver the, deliver the aims and objectives of the monitoring officer post for the council. See Nigel's here today as the head of democratic services and naturally the world within which you work is all supported by that team and they do a great job, whether it's on the committee servicing side or supporting scrutiny. Very proud of that team and everything that they've achieved over the last year and the circumstances that we've been working within. And then lastly, David Ingham's team, which is information assurance and they, they support me to execute the role of the CRO that I just outlined a second ago. Again, another character you'll see regularly is Michelle Grady, who's my assistant director for finance. She's my deputy section 151 officer, so pretty much performs the day-to-day roles of leading the finance function on behalf of me. She's supported in that by Dave Simpson and Tony Warnock, who respectively look after the corporate finance function and the service finance function. And also reporting into Michelle is Lucy Pledge, for those of you who come across the audit committee. Lucy's a key player in that area, supporting the audit committee. And then Joe Ray, who's our head of pensions, again, supporting the pensions committee, which I'll come to shortly. Last but not least on that list is Tony Kavanagh, Assistant Director for Human Resources and Organisational Support. Tony joined us last November and was the last piece in the jigsaw of my original structure, if you will, around, around that corporate support function. So Tony leads the human resources functions and the business support functions, some 800 employees within that alone. And, you know, we've got business support colleagues all across the county supporting our frontline services. So again, a very important function. And then, and then lastly on that slide, but not the focus of today, given the fact is this is the corporate presentation, is Di Coulson, who's the AD for public protection, which I said joined us in November time. That's covered, and covered, well, the services that covers is the safer communities brief, which is all of our community safety partnership work and partnership work with the police, trading standards, prevent, a wide range of services. And then happy to say, James Chapel as well, who's joined us this week as our new head of registration and coroner's service. But again, not the focus of today, but just wanted to, you know, obviously highlight that that's part of the directorate and that that team support three new executive portfolio holders in councillors Bradwell, Woolley and McNally. And just to talk briefly about the political interface, so the rest of the directorate on the corporate side, accountable to councillor Bootroyd, supported by councillor Spratt, is the exec support councillor around the people and the governance activities, so Tony and David's area. And then everything else under Michelle, I guess, accountable to the leader of the council, supported by councillor Whittington, who we do a lot of close work with and very much enjoy that. So just a few facts and figures, so budget of the area is just under £28 million on the services side. That's a net figure, so some of the functions are income generating. So legal services operates as a trading, a traded service, as does. So legal services operates as a traded service, as does some of the income generating activities that we have in Di's area. The finance team are also responsible for just under £68 million of other budgets. So that's things like the capital financing budget for the sizable capital programme that we run, insurance and other related items. And in terms of people, obviously Debbie talked during her presentation about the commissioned services. Clearly, the people doing things for Lincolnshire County Council goes much beyond the four and a half thousand people that work for us. But actually, in terms of directly employed staff, just over 1,100 and some one in four of the council's employed staff work in resources. So a broad team, if you will. Just moving on, Tracey, please. So Debbie outlined the role of this board in her presentation. And so as well as taking a lot of our activity through this board and on to executive or executive made decisions, we're also accountable for and service to other major council committees. So pensions, which is responsible for the administration and all investment decisions related to the Lincolnshire Pension Fund, which I'm the scheme manager for. But also the audit committee as well, which is an independent assurance function of the council around our risk management activities, our internal control functions and any other governance activities. So I guess alongside the work that democratic services do in terms of supporting the machinery of the democratic process in the council, a lot of my team are also key parts of the other elements of the democratic machine, if you will, in terms of supporting other major decision making and oversight functions of the council. Just move on, please, Tracey. Thank you. So this slide just sets out some of the key service issues that we're facing at the moment across the three corporate functions that I talked about. So in terms of finance, I've put business world first and there's two elements to this. I think James might touch upon the implementation side. Mine's very much around the business change element. So for a number of years, we've had challenges around our enterprise resource planning system, business world. And we're currently in the process of an implementation of an update around that. Now, particularly around Michelle's finance team is the business change and benefits of those that that new system or that improved system will give to her team in terms of shifting her delivery model, which I've put as another bullet point around moving from the steward, the nuts and bolts, the bean counter role of the accountant to one that's very much more focused on strategic support to the business. It's something we're very keen on implementing and which will hopefully see some improved benefits for the council in terms of its decision making in the future. The other bullet point I've put next to finance is the budget. I'm pretty relentless in my quest for continuous improvement in everything that we do within the directorate. And that's no more so in terms of how we support members set the annual budget, whether that's on the revenue side or on the capital side. Lincolnshire's rightly acknowledged as a strong council financially. And clearly, in my role as supporting the council as the section 151 officer, a key drive and mission for me is to continue to ensure that remains the case, whatever is happening in the outside world, whether that's austerity as we've been through or the after effects of the COVID pandemic. So very much focused on continually strengthening the way we work. And I guess touching on some of the comments Debbie made about us acting as one team. One of the things that we have seen in recent years as we've come together as a group is us very much working together corporately to manage that council budget on behalf of councillors very much as a team rather than in a siloed sort of fashion, as it may have done in the past. So very much focused around that. Human resources and organisational support, two points here. Again, Debbie referred to the people strategy. Tony, since he joined us in November, has been working hard on drafting a people strategy, which is all encompassing in terms of ensuring that we continue to be an employer of choice, a place that people want to come to work, but one that looks after its employees in the best way possible and on the front foot as well. And we'll be bringing that paper to this committee later on in the year. And I hope we have some good engagement on that and you'll agree that it's been a good piece of work when we discuss it with you. That is a key part of the council's transformation programme. But also as well, our business support function is very much a focus of our transformation. One of the things that, again, James might touch upon is around the IT capabilities of the council and the rollout of Office 365. And again, an administrative function that could be heavily seen to be based on paper, what have you, in the past, again, needs to be as cutting edge as it possibly can. And we're very much looking about how we can ensure that business support function is as cutting edge as it can be. So there'll be more of that in future. And then lastly, on legal, two key points there really. I talked about the traded function that David runs. We're very proud of our legal services function. Not only does it provide excellent advice to this council, but also six of the other seven districts in Lincolnshire now. And we play a very key leadership role in supporting good governance and legal advice across the county now. And again, we'll hear more about that as we progress through this administrative calendar. And last but not least, I've put the alternative business structure on as well. So something that came during the last administration through this committee was the agreement to set up what's known as an ABS, the alternative business structure. And this would allow David's team to broaden its horizons, if you will, in terms of working with other clients in a more traded environment than it does at the moment. So again, we'll be bringing back more information on that as we progress throughout the next couple of years. So next slide, please, Tracey. This is my last slide. I've just noticed some of the key set piece things that you'll see from resources during the year. So on the finance front, a very heavy amount of work comes through this committee related to our finance activities. So on an end to end, I guess, the revenue budget comes every January. We also have a good debate about that. Clearly, we come through this committee as well three times during the year to report our progress against that budget. And then lastly, and the first report that this new committee will see is the year end finance report. And we'll be bringing that through in July. And again, that's a look back at the activity that we've undertaken during the year, how we've progressed against that budget and then any actions that may need to be recommended by the executive to council when it's finally reported to council at the end of September. I've noted capital, something that we've brought in over the last two years. We've very much strengthened the capital process, both from a visibility in the committee sphere, but also in terms of how we're supporting it as officers. Again, the previous connotation of this committee is heard from officers and councillor Whittington, how we've strengthened that process, both at the member and officer level, including the introduction of things like a capital review group, which is designed to challenge and support all capital business cases that are coming through before they make their way into live projects and something that I think we've made great progress on. And last but not least, on the finance side, treasury management, again, pretty much on an annual cycle. The council's required under the prudential code to set an annual treasury management strategy. We then track progress against that throughout the year and then report on that at the end of the year in terms of how we've achieved against the aims and objectives of that strategy in terms of managing our money in the financial markets. In terms of HR and organisational support, as well as some of the ad hoc reports that I've talked about around the people strategy. Again, next month, we'll be bringing the quarterly management information report, which gives you all the information on our people based activity. I think common subjects of discussion can be around things like our spend on agency staff, sickness rates. And again, we receive good challenge from members around some of those key elements of managing our staffing functions. And then lastly, I've put corporate plan and performance. Again, as a corporate function, obviously, we've heavily been focused on being and providing those good value council services in terms of that aspiration that Debbie talked about. But since the addition of public protection into the directorate, again, we've now got visibility across all four aspirations and something I'm very keen to drive forward as well in terms of supporting the overall delivery of the corporate plan. So that was me from resources. Thank you, Chair. But I'd be happy to take any questions from anybody.
There's your chance. Okay. Anybody want to raise anything? Anything that's been said or anything that's not been said to Andrew? Yep, Hugo.
Just sort of going forward, treasury management is one area that I find quite difficult. And I suppose it's because the trouble is, you're not in it every day. You're picking it up when the reports come and they're normally incredibly in depth and everything else. Can we just have some, say, refresh training before we launch back in on, especially on that one? Whether it's even in the committee or outside the committee, I think, would be ideal.
Good idea, a good point. I'm sure it'll be picked up. Yep, council development, for example. And maybe we could have something that's designed particularly for this committee because we're the ones that handle that aspect. I'm sure Karen had helped there.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, Chair, as well. So yeah, we have got a report coming to the next meeting around the year end position. And we have to do that because of the annual calendar. But we are holding an introduction to local government finance training course on the 9th of July. There is some elements of those slides that Ian Firefield will be providing or supporting us with in that training around treasury management. But completely get the point, councillor Marfleet. Anything that we can do to support this committee, absolutely committed to doing that. So leave that with us and we'll come back.
The point I was making really was maybe Hugo's point is valid in the sense of bespoke training for OSMB as opposed to what you might call generic training for every council as part of that programme. Yeah, okay.
Chairman, councillor Adams would like to speak.
Just a question, would it be possible to have copies of those slides, please? I don't know whether we've already got them. If I have, I'd miss them, but it would be helpful. Thank you.
Chairman, could I ask colleagues and officers if, when they speak, to speak directly into the mic? Because I'm having real difficulty, because I suffer from tinnitus, to hear what people are saying, particularly with their backs to me. Thank you.
Point well made. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you for that, Andrew. James?
I wasn't gonna, well, I was. Bob, basically, I suspect all these will go on the new councillor's hub, which perhaps just wants refreshing round. But I did actually go on there the other day to look at it and everything so far and all the councillors' training and everything else is on there. But it's a great place to have, I think, we need to start to use it as a one stop shop for good information like this.
Thank you for that, Hugo. I'll come for some training.
Okay, really is your turn now, James.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. And thank you for your welcome earlier this morning as well. Yes, so I'll talk to you a little bit about the commercial directorate, which I'm responsible for. And the way that I'll do that is try and give just an outline of the structure and therefore the types of activities that are within corporate, sorry, commercial, sorry. And then also explain a little bit why the directorate was set up and then talk to you about some of the challenges we're facing and some of the priorities as well. So and hopefully from that, you'll get a feel for some of the activity, much of which is already included within your forward plan. But if there are things on there that you want to dig into deeper as a committee, then I'd really welcome that. Equally, if there are things you want to talk to me about outside of this committee meeting, then again, that, really welcome that as well, as Debbie said at the start. Okay, so if we can move on, thank you, to the first slide. The structure slide shows four blocks of service delivery underneath me. And they are, as you say, we've got the assistant directors sat in there, many of whom you'll recognise, certainly those of you that have been with this committee previously. So Sophie Reeve is assistant director. It's called commercial, which is a little bit confusing because a whole directorate is called commercial. But her main priority area is around contracts and procurement and commissioning. And Debbie's mentioned there about the amount of external service provision we have, particularly in adult services. And there's a big chunk of activity that happens there. And also, we're engaged and involved and supporting a range of other large scale contracts as well. So the CERCO contract, and as an example, Simon here today doing an excellent job in supporting this from an IT point of view, is delivered through that CERCO contract. We've then got corporate property. And again, councillor Spratt is now the new support member under councillor Boothroyd for that. So looking forward to working closely with yourself in the future there and with Kevin on that. And you'll see there's a list of activities that are undertaken within that property service area. One public estate is a good example of that, where we take a very active role and have been successful in both funding and working collaboratively with a range of our partners in the public sector to help look at more joined up property solutions across the county. I'll mention corporate landlord a little bit later, but also there's activity in there that links into Andrew's area inasmuch as the capital receipts and the capital programme. Quite a fair amount of activity happens under that corporate property service area. A lot of the work that you see around the cleaning and things like that and building opening and caretaking is done through the Vinci contract, and that's why that's mentioned there. And there's also, is a property company that's set up and so far is inactive at this stage, but gives us an opportunity for potential future development. The other part that I'll just mention, and again, it's mentioned in a bit more detail on a further slide as well, is the county farms. So there are only a small number now of county councils who retain a stock of farmland. And I'll mention that a little bit later, but that brings in fairly significant income for us and is profitable for us. Under IMT and enterprise architecture, John Wickens is the assistant director for that. And you'll have seen and heard John at some of the previous committee meetings and also Donna usually supporting as well. And those are just the different areas that are covered. And I'll mention IT in a little bit more detail further on. And then there's a brand new area, which has been developed from a combination of pulling together different aspects of activity that happen across the council. So we've talked about how we work together and the one council approach. And I guess this area under Andrew McLean is an area that is exactly that. So it's not a load of new people. There are people that have done previous activity in more silos before. And this is making sure that we work in a more collective way across the organisation. One of the key things that Andrew is responsible for is the transformation programme. And as you're aware, he and we'll be talking about that a little bit later in this agenda. We've also set up program management office. And other areas of activity under Andrew include mosaic, which is an important part for the social care, case management records and business world, which is, crosses a number of things. So Andrew's already mentioned it and I'll mention it again a little bit later on. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So just a little bit of background then. So the commercial directorate is relatively new. It was set up in 2019 and I joined the council almost at the same time as Andrew did, a week later. So I claimed the new boy tag for a little bit longer than he could, but it's worn very thin now, obviously. I think the reason for the commercial directorate was that as a council, we have been historically really successful within services. And there's a lot of evidence to support that and it's been really good. But where we've not necessarily achieved things is looking across the council and understanding how we can exploit some of those opportunities and get best value for money from a corporate approach to some systems and some approaches. So that's, I guess, the high level purpose of the commercial directorate and the elements that come underneath that sit there really. And as I said, part of that role is about delivering improvement, looking for opportunities and enabling and empowering staff. And that then links back to the people strategy and Andrew's area. So there is a fair bit of overlap in that. Just to mention, I think, commercial, when you look at those lists of things, they seem quite back office sort of things that aren't hugely important. But I think, just to give you an example, under COVID, some of the activity that we've done. So IMT is a really good example, where that's enabled the organisation to work in very different ways and continue to work effectively despite having to be forced, if you like, to comply and work from home predominantly. Certainly with our property as well, the way that that's been managed through various different restrictions and requirements that have been inspected by the health and safety executive as well. And again, a successful approach to that. And in procurement, in particular on commissioning, how we've worked with some private sectors and some contract commercial providers, if you like, to help support them through COVID and understand how we can keep delivering the right outcomes for our residents and our businesses. So a lot of work done behind the scenes, but making a difference out there in the county as well. Because of the nature of the services, they're quite cross cutting. And as you'd expect, therefore, a number of executive members are involved as portfolio holders for different elements. I won't list them all, but I won't talk through them all, but they're there for you there to see who they are. And again, I can talk to you separately about any of those linkages if that's helpful. if that's helpful. So as we move through, then, just for each of those four blocks that report up into me, if you like, those service areas, I'll just talk through some of the priorities that we're working on at the moment, and then some of the challenges that I believe we're facing at the moment. So within Sophie's area, we're currently undertaking a commissioning review, which means, again, we're looking at how we can best deliver commercial and commissioning activity across the council in a, obviously, a compliant way, but in a way that maximises the skills that we've got to get the best outcomes that we can. So we're working through that at the moment and how we do that in a one-council approach. We've also got a lot of work at the moment as well around reviewing the CERCO contract, so as this committee will know, those members from before, we report regularly on the performance of the CERCO contract, we've extended it in the past, that will now run out in 2024, and we cannot extend beyond that. So therefore, we have to look at different ways of how we're going to deliver those services. So there's a lot of work going on at the moment to understand what options there are, what the market is like, where, you know, where are our opportunities to do things differently, perhaps to do things as well as we can, hopefully a little bit cheaper and a little bit better, and it's how we can work through those options, and there are planned reports coming to this committee to update you on progress with that. We're also doing a fair bit of work around the county's wide-area network, and that's basically things that you don't see, but it supports how we can access data and information across the whole county, from ourselves in different buildings and locations, but it also is used by the vast majority of schools in our county as well. And again, that's due for renewal, it's running out in October 2022, and again, we've got to do something different there to get that up and running and be legally compliant, again, from then. Complex area work, a lot of stuff happening there. And then also some general figures, Debbie mentioned before about the number of contracts that there are within adults, and that we take that type of approach generally to adult services as opposed to children's, and there's a team of people that work under Sophie that actually deliver that commissioned service, so they're the people that set up those services, they look at the contracts, they manage those contracts, and they link in really closely, obviously, with adult services as well to provide the performance information that they need. And that equates to about £220 million per annum, so a whole range of absolutely critical services that we're involved in there. And then just generally, across the council, about 4,000 contracts in total, and 80 are currently being recommissioned. Some of the types of things that are causing us challenges at the moment, I think, post-Covid, a lot of the markets have been, come under pressure, and we're going through a process now of trying to understand how recovery will shape some of those markets in different ways in the future, and that may provide us with threats, but it may also provide us a real opportunity, so we're just working through and understanding that better at the moment. One-council approach and full compliance, and that links to the commissioning review, and that's an ongoing process that we're doing, and we do have some difficulty around some of the specialised nature of some of the staff that we need to make that work really effectively. If we move then to property, an asset management plan is basically a plan that's got all our property in it and shows what our intentions are for that property over the coming short to medium term, and that's really important, and we've currently done a draft of that, and that's out for consultation at the moment. And again, Covid will impact on that, so the type of way that we work and operate, although our office estate is only a small part of our property portfolio, but actually how we operate in the future will change some of that. So again, we're looking at that and making sure that's relevant for post-Covid world. Also play a fairly big role in the capital programme, Andrew's already mentioned that, and there's a range of projects that are mentioned there already, and again, that's providing those capital programmes across the council, Blue Light Programme being mentioned there, and SEND Programme, et cetera, and extra-care housing, so some really important things for the council that we're involved in and supporting the services to deliver those. I mentioned before corporate landlord briefly, this is just really a phrase that's used, or a term that's used, to talk about how we get control and management, if you like, of all our estate across the council. So referring back to what I said earlier about the departments being really strong and really effective, many of those manage their own bits of property, so we've now, our plan is to pull all of that into, under Kevin, as a corporate property portfolio that we will manage effectively. We're about two-thirds the way through that at the moment, still about a third to go, so that's on track for next year. And then capital receipts, again, just playing a part by selling off, when the market's right and when the time is right, certain property assets we've got that feeds into the capital receipts that Andrew reports on. So again, mentioning Covid here, there is some uncertainty at the moment around the sector itself and around some of the costs of construction materials and things like that, that are causing some concerns at the moment, and supply of them, and it's, again, it's understanding is that a short-term problem, is it a medium term, is it long term, and working through what impact that will have. And again, talking to Andy, who is the Place Directorate, who has similar issues with some of his capital programmes, and also Andrew is the risk owner and the finance responsible person there. The Agricultural Act and the Environment Bill, we believe, will have some sort of impact on our county farms estate, as will potentially Brexit as well, and some of the new trade arrangements, and what does that mean for the farming industry, and therefore, what does that mean to the demand and value of land that we've got. So the land in the farm estate that we have got is, the vast majority is top-quality, Grade A agricultural land, it's really, really excellent land, and at the moment commands a high value and therefore command a high rental, and that is part of our income that we generate. So we're keeping a close eye on that and understanding the implications. And I think the other thing is, with the construction work that we do, how do we ensure that us as officers, members, and then people of Lincolnshire have transparency around the value for money that we're getting for that? And construction projects often have a habit, and I don't just mean here, I mean everywhere, of sort of costing more than they started off saying, et cetera, so how do we actually demonstrate what we said originally in a business case and what it actually ends up costing, and if there is any variation, have real transparent ways of explaining why that's happened? Within IMT, I think generally a significantly improving picture with IMT over the last few years, and we're now delivering generally a good, reliable, safe, secure service. However, that doesn't mean that things are perfect, and I appreciate that, and the contacts that you have with Simon will sort of also support the fact that things are not perfect yet. There's a lot of work that we're doing, though, still and continuing that, so we're looking at, as I say, the post-Covid, sorry, post-CERCO contract, and the fact that we need a different way of delivering IT then, so we're working through that at the moment, and again, John and I will come back to you and talk to you about that at future committee meetings. Microsoft 365, Office 365 is being used for teams and things like that, and has been for a while, further rollout happening, we did have some issues with that, but we're going through that with further, deeper testing, and that will continue to roll out and provide more opportunities to use these things in different ways. And also supporting the Transformation Programme with the digital side of the work as well. And there's a lot of activity that still goes on about making sure that when you switch it on in the morning, it still works, hence the keeping the lights on. Again, we have issues with supply at the moment around microchips and things that go into laptops and tablets and things which are making it difficult, so with the new members, we managed to secure enough tablets for new members to have on day one, but that was a real, real struggle behind the scenes, but we did it, but it's not easy at the moment, it's not a question of, are you willing to pay this much, they're just not available at the moment, and that's a real problem for us, so we're looking at ways of how we can mitigate that. Andrew, within his area, has got, as I said, the risk ownership, but also information assurance and governments and things like that there as well, so this, the data security and cyber risks links across both our areas. But again, as I've said to this committee before, something that is growing as a risk constantly, we are upping our game all the time with how we are automatically identifying these things and dealing with them, and deal with many attempts at Lincolnshire, but also it's the same across all public sector organisations, but I think it's a growing risk all the time, so as we are stepping up our game, so people who are determined to try and get through are stepping up theirs, so it's a constant battle, I guess. And again, making sure we get the right skills and the right staff and managing people's expectations around what we're delivering. And then moving on to the Transformation one, I won't dwell on this long, because Andrew and Claire will be talking to you in a few minutes about the Transformation Programme. Business World is there, and as I said, there's a significant amount of work that we are doing at the moment around that from a project point of view of how we're getting that right. Most of the services using that Business World product directly are sit in Andrew's area, so there's a lot of crossover between the two of us of how we manage that and manage the workload there. We are, though, looking as well at how we can develop more reliance on data and information so that we can provide information for you so that you can make the best informed decisions. We need to move away from ad hoc feel and move more to a data-based organisation, and we will try and develop that, and as we do, we'll build that into our papers to you and into the decision-making processes for you as well. And so, as I say, under the challenges, I've mentioned Business World there, where we are still working through a range of issues, but are making some significant progress and moving towards the new system. And just driving in bedding change generally is never easy and is always a challenge, and it links back to the staff survey that Debbie mentioned, where I think it was 49% of people said that they don't feel fully engaged at the moment in that, so we're working hard to try and combat that. And then finally, just how do these sort of pull together? Well, this is a list that currently is coming to yourselves, so if nothing changes, this is what you'll see, and I think really there, it's just the thought that, I think many of those do correlate back and link back to what I've been talking about, some perhaps, there are maybe some gaps, and it's just an opportunity to compare what I've talked about with what's on the forward plan. And that's it for me, Chair, unless there's any questions, please.
That's great. Any questions? I mean, briefly, that's the sort of thing that we'll be seeing over the next four years, so it was a good introduction from all three. Right.
I've got a couple of questions. Just to say privately, when it says about moving on to Hoopel Limited, and I'm not a business man, but I have no people in business, and limited companies can very quickly disappear, I believe, and sometimes they're designed to do that, so I just wondered, what the implication would be, living out of sort of partnering with these Hoopel people, if they're limited companies?
Yes, thank you for the question. Sorry, Chair, is it okay?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Go for it.
Thank you for the question. Yes, so Hoopel is a limited company, but we are, we've negotiated to be a shareholder on that company, so we have a stake in it as well, and therefore, as a result, can help control that through shareholder meetings and that sort of thing, so we'll be actively involved in that, and they are themselves a subsidiary of another county council, so it's not a typical ruthless private sector company, if you like, there is a public sector ethos behind it, and we are now part of that company, and therefore will have rights on that as well, and will therefore have an insight into the performance of the company.
So what's going to be out of it?
It's Herefordshire.
Oh. I did just have a little question.
Yeah?
Thank you. You were saying about the contractors, you were talking about the CERCO. Can you have the mic on? Sorry.
Oh, can you hear me? Okay. You were saying about how you contract things out, and I was just wondering how you sort of monitor and evaluate the performance of, because you've got, you know, hundreds of contracts going out and 80 being passed over, as you said on the slide, how you monitor the performance of the businesses which you've contracted the services out to, if you see what I mean? There must be maybe a framework or something?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yes, yes, there is, and there's an extensive monitoring of performance against the contract that's undertaken, so to start with, before we let a contract, we'd work, so if it was a contract in adult services, for argument's sake, we'd work with adult services to understand what the nature of that care contract is, what they wanted to see as deliverables from that, and what the outcomes they wanted to see from that contract. We then put that into a scope, if you like, and then go to the market with that and get prices for that from a range of competitive companies. Once we've then selected the one that we are contracting with, we would then, within that contract, have a range of performance requirements that they would need to meet, and they are monitored on a regular basis, and it depends on the nature of the contract, the amount of monitoring and the frequency of monitoring, but they are all managed regularly and frequently to ensure that there is compliance, and then we work with the private sector company if there are any issues with that compliance, but it's a three-way process between my staff, the staff within adult services in that example, and the company that are delivering those services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. What, good presentation, thank you. One of the areas that I think sort of I would put as a challenge is addressing, like, risk and trust, and by that, I mean, we're getting so much in a world where sort of everyone's worried about sort of taking any risks or, and sort of, in effect, trust, and by that, I mean, it's like I met somebody when I was canvassing in adult social care, and she said, and she clearly needed support in adult social care, there's no question about that, but it's like she said, 'To get to where I got to was the most hardest, painful experience that you could imagine', and it's because, in effect, we have to put so many barriers in the way to prevent fraud, to prevent this, to prevent that, that in the end, we make the experience really quite terrible, and it's that sort of element of trust, just as much as trust goes down, if the guy's filling in a pothole, 'Oh, I haven't got that next one on my list', 'Well, I can't do it', 'Well, why not, you're there', well, actually, that's a trust element, and it's about that sort of giving flexibility and freedom, but at the same time, we have to sort of, and it is a challenge that, and I think it's something that we don't really often take seriously enough, to how we can make life much easier, and I think, you know, and it is that highways thing, isn't it? Just get on and do it, you're there, but actually, no, because you haven't got it in the system, we'll take a photo shot of it, no, but you're still not there, and it's sort of, and adults works in that world, just as much as children, because we've got safeguarding, and that sort of creates those challenges, but never mind IT.
Could I just ask, sorry, Debbie, were you going to speak? Because I was going to make the point, to what extent does your department, the whole world that you operate in, have influence in how adult social care operates in the way that Hugo suggests is a problem, or highways in relation to a game of work? And I think it might help us if we understood the interrelationship, because you've got some responsibilities, but there's also a service department doing it.
So come back on that first then, Chair, if that's okay. So the example that you used there about what influence do they have, so as an example, the person who works under Sophie, who heads up that whole contract side for people services, for adult services, she is part of the Adults DLT, as we call it, so the Directorate Leadership Team, so she is invited to that and contributes to that and has the opportunity to feed into the decisions that adults are making as officers, but also then has contact as well with a portfolio holder for that area. So there is the opportunity to influence, but at the end of the day, it is about, you're right, it is about that relationship, because Glenn does deliver adult services and will have, obviously, views around how that should be delivered, and our role is to help him deliver that, but also to challenge at times as well, if we feel that that delivery isn't heading in the direction that is best for the residents of Lincolnshire, although I'm sure Glenn wouldn't do that, but there is a bit of challenge role in there, it's not just supporting and doing what we're told, there is a challenge role as well back to the people who are responsible for that service delivery.
Councillor Dilks, Phil.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thanks for the presentations. Kind of say, I'm sorry I was a bit late for the start of the meeting, I allowed an hour and a half to get here, and it wasn't enough, partly, I'm pleased to say, due to some road servicing on the way. I certainly sympathise and share councillor Hugo's concerns about the potholes, and, you know, who hasn't, you know, I'm sure we've all had the experience, when they came about a month or six weeks ago to my village, you know, to repair the potholes that people have been complaining about for months, that they, I went down to see them and said, 'Oh, I'm really pleased to see you, that you've come to fill the potholes', he said, 'No, just these three, not the others'. And of course, they did, they disappeared. So anyway, that's how that works or doesn't. I was just interested, and thank you, as I say, for the presentation, James, in the county farms estate, you said that, you know, we're one of the few counties now with county farms, I just wondered if you could give us a bit more information on that, forgive me, point me to a briefing somewhere, if, I don't want to take other members' time up, but, you know, how many farms do we have, how much land is involved, how much land does the county own in county farms, what is the income from it? And I noticed that you've got the capital receipts targeted. And I noticed that you've got the capital receipts target of, was it 2022 million? No, no, it was, I can't remember what the target was, 25 million up in 2022. Is that just in 22 or is that a cumulative figure? And is County Farms part of that target? You know, are we looking to sell off where appropriate some County Farms? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dexia, thank you Chair. I think with the Chair's permission, it might be worth, with that range of questions, if you don't mind, if I do pull together a response and perhaps circulate it around all committee members, if that's appropriate? Focus on the County Farms and give a bit of insight into that. And the capital receipt side, that's the receipts through to 2022. So that's the planned receipts cumulative from now through to 2022. If there are, and there are one or two, if there are any County Farm sales planned, they would be included within that total figure. But again, I can provide you with further information on that, Commissioner Dilt, as well. Thank you.
Thank you, fine. Anybody else want to make a contribution, ask a question, make a point? Yep.
Thank you, Chairman. You went, thank you for the presentation, James. You touched on the issue due to Covid of not having building supplies. What preventative measures have we got as a council if that issue is long term? Because obviously, if we need to build, whether it's for potholes or whether it's to build more larger projects, if we need to build, say, a school or a hospital and we simply haven't got the materials. Whilst I understand that, I don't think our residents would appreciate necessarily the logistical issues and I can see a rather long line of angry residents for us councillors to deal with if, if that's the answer we, we have to give.
Thank you. Yes, so to respond to that, I think as things currently stand, what we're seeing is some shortages of some materials and some, in some cases, some fairly significant short term increases in cost. Timber is just an example of that, which has gone up probably about 40% in the last three or four months. And obviously, when you multiply that up into any project, that I'm flagging that as a risk, it's not necessarily an issue yet, because we're not about to buy, you know, 100 pallet loads of timber today and we wouldn't because, but I guess it's understanding where that price fluctuation will go and trying to pick into the market and understand that. Regarding shortages at the moment, there are no issues today that mean we're stopping doing anything as a result of not being able to obtain anything. But we are, and Andy would be, I think, saying the same thing from the Place Directorate, we are having to go through a range of, wider range of suppliers than we would normally have done and looking for different ways of perhaps, I don't mean compromising on quality at all, but looking at slightly different ways of delivering the same outcome. So we happen to be a bit more creative than perhaps just saying, well, we normally buy those, so let's go and buy those, what's the best price for them? So at the moment, it's not a massive problem, but if I take IT as an example, it is. And to be perfectly honest, there is nothing we can do about that. And that main, I appreciate that won't affect residents in the same way, but obviously, if it does start to affect our staff that we can't operate effectively, it will do. So that's an example where it's absolutely a global problem. We, we are working with Microsoft to try and secure certain supplies. We've got alternative devices that we're looking at that are slightly different, that might need a slightly different approach and looking at those and how we can use them. So we are being as creative as we can, I think, but I think there has to be an acceptance that a lot of that is outside of Lincolnshire's control and outside of our control and we'll really be struggling to influence some of those global issues.
Thank you. Is that okay? Can, can we move on or any more questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks Debbie, thanks Andrew, thanks James. Okay, I'm sure you'll get to know everybody here during the next few years. Just for the record, can, can we note the presentation by indicating that we want to? If you raise, if you want to, raise your hands. Thanks, that's agreed then. Okay, lovely, thank you. We've got another presentation now on transformation. Okay, an introduction to the Transformation Programme. I want to welcome Andrew McLean, Assistant Director Corporate Transformation, Programme and Performance, and also Claire Rowley, Head of Transformation, attending today via Teams. Okay, welcome to both of you. Off, off you go.
Hopefully you can hear me. And good morning, everyone. And hopefully you've got the first slide of the presentation showing. We can't see that online at the moment, so hopefully all's working well. So just going to give a short presentation to give an overview of the Transformation Programme. The programme itself was first stood up around this time last year. Initially had around 19 projects covering areas across the, the four priorities within our corporate plan, which Debbie set out earlier in her presentation. All with a wide range of benefits for our residents, our staff, our businesses and visitors. The programme itself first received full executive approval in November last year. And it was agreed at that point that programme wide project reports and updates would be reported into overview and scrutiny management board on an ongoing basis. Some of those individual projects within there will also report into specific scrutiny committees too. We're currently working with the corporate leadership team to review the focus of the plan, of the, of the project and make sure it aligns with our corporate plan and council priorities moving forward. So I'll hand you over now to Claire Rowley. Claire is our Head of Transformation and she's going to take you through the overview of the programme. Thanks Claire.
Thank you, Andrew. Good morning, everybody. Can I just check please? Because as Andrew said, we can't see the slides. Are we on slide two, the what are we aiming to achieve? So hopefully we're on that one. And just to continue with where Andrew started, the programme itself was created by Lincolnshire County Council to give us that opportunity for us to learn better from each other and to work collaboratively to identify new and improved ways to support wider council objectives. We have for many years been excellent at service led transformation, which has enabled us to become a strong council with nationally recognised services that we're all proud of. We now want to build on this success for all parts of the council. Though the programme itself wholly supports the corporate plan and the One Council approach by driving innovation and efficiency and to achieve the following names that are listed on the slide in front of you. Ultimately, to support our vision of working for a better future and our priority to continue to provide good value council services. Andrew's just referenced that we are doing a current review that's being undertaken by our corporate leadership team, which has reviewed the Transformation Programme projects along with other major projects and programmes across the council. As a result of this, a small number of our projects have paused in full or part and some have closed or moved into service areas. So this will enable us to continue to fully support projects identified by our corporate leadership team as corporate priorities linked to the corporate plan, and I'll come on to these shortly. If we can go on to the next slide please, programme governance. So we wanted to provide you with an overview of our governance structure. Progress, risks and a number of other areas are monitored by service leads and project sponsors, project boards, and this all feeds into the Transformation Programme and our corporate leadership team. Starting at the bottom of the image, each project has an allocated project manager and service lead, and these are ordinarily one of our heads of service or assistant directors. Each project has a project board that meets and is reported into regularly. And above that, our projects fall into three work streams and reporting to the monthly programme steering board. The board includes representation from a number of our corporate areas that are listed on the slide in front of you. And this in turn, reports into our monthly CLT meeting, which is set up to report purely on the programme. Finally, bringing us to you here, at the top of the structure of overview and scrutiny, our informal executive and our executive meetings. What the Transformation Programme has enabled us to do is to bring together some of our most high profile projects to give that far greater visibility, corporate oversight and accountability of key activity. All with providing that assurance of funding being spent on council priorities and confidence that the benefits identified are being realised. We can move to the next slide please, which is in relation to programme reporting. So the programme is reported on regularly, weekly, through regular meetings between project managers and service leads and through our programme management office briefings whereby our project managers come together to share and identify those risks and issues and also interdependencies with other corporate projects and programmes. We have fortnightly highlight reports that are completed by our project managers and agreed by service leads that report into our monthly steering board and our monthly CLT meeting. In addition, we have agreed that there will be six monthly progress reports to you here with the next due in October, followed by April. We can move on to the next slide please. As mentioned, work is currently being undertaken with our corporate leadership team to agree which other major projects or programmes underway, planned or required, should come into the Transformation Programme. Following the last 18 months, we are reviewing our current position to take account of the impact of Covid and the opportunities that this has presented, all to ensure our priorities are right in the future for our communities, workforce and members. As a result, a number of projects have been paused, paused or moved into service areas. On to the next slide please, which is our pause projects. So all of those listed have been paused in full or part to ensure alignment of the digital work we are currently undertaking. As Debbie mentioned, our residents, our communities at large want to be able to access our services in a convenient and seamless way. So we are working to ensure we have a clear plan for how we implement digital changes on the launch of our digital strategy that's planned for later this year. We want a plan that encompasses all elements of digital to ensure consistency in our approach and also an understanding of what we want to achieve, by when and for what purpose and the outcome we expect from that. At the end of that slide, the development of this digital strategy along with the customer strategy is currently out for community engagement ending tomorrow. And we have two engagement sessions that have been scheduled for members on the 21st of June and 7th of July, so I hope to see some of you there. And moving on to the next slide. So the projects listed here have all completed their work under the Transformation Programme and closed as projects, moving into business as usual or service led implementation. We've completed the business intelligence review for the local authority and are currently developing our business intelligence strategy. Our corporate commissioning review has been undertaken and moved into service area for implementation. The transformation of Corinna's Services has also been completed its first phase under the Transformation Programme and moved into service area for implementation. And finally, our Intranet, which has been referenced earlier in this meeting, was successfully launched, launched earlier this year and has already received really excellent feedback due to it being easier to access and also navigate. So if we can move on to the next slide please. The next four slides, what we want to show is how all of our projects are within the programme linked clearly to the corporate plan aspirations Debbie referenced earlier in this meeting. The first, high aspirations, provides us with a focus on supporting our staff to achieve the priorities set out in the corporate plan and also to embed our One Council approach. We have been developing our people's strategy, all with the aim of increasing employee satisfaction, investing in internal skills to reduce staff turnover and reduce staff absence. We also have our Smarter Working Programme, which is working on the policies and practices for smarter working and our office accommodation and workspace. Through this programme, we hope to have that continued improvement in innovative technology and we will improve our services and support our employees with an improved work life balance and continue to support employees to deliver their best for our communities and members. Moving on to the next slide. The second group of projects provides us with a focus on increasing independence in our communities, as referenced earlier, to control the growing demand and increasing costs through early intervention, all with the aim of continuing to improve outcomes for our communities, stabilising and avoiding escalating costs, to make savings wherever possible and manage future cost pressures. As a local authority, we want to ensure that vulnerable adults access the right service for their level of need, leading to better outcomes through our adults demand management project. We are implementing a revised high needs strategy approach within our special educational needs and disability sector to reduce the pressure on high need spending and continue to provide effective specialist support provision. And through our children in care transformation, we want to continue to improve the outcomes for our looked after children, young people, and have set up a number of work streams that look across a child's journey to prevent escalation of need and continue to improve outcomes for our children. On to our next slide. Linked to creative thriving environments, we want to change the way the council is accessed by our staff, members, residents, communities, businesses and visitors through enhancing digital services. As Debbie said, our communities want to be able to access us seamlessly and in a way that is best for them. We are developing a digital and customer strategy and digital blueprint, as already mentioned, and we are working on our data visualisation to deliver a reporting structure that supports Lincolnshire County Council to become an intelligence led organisation. This is all underpinned by enabling technology, some of which James has already spoken through, to ensure we have technology that is working correctly and used in a variety of ways. Because we want technology to be seen as an enabler for change, as opposed to a constraint, by ensuring that the IT service provision is fit for purpose and meets the needs of the organisation. On to our next slide please. For our final cohort of projects, these have been set up to improve how we deliver our functions, ensuring efficiency and effectiveness of processes whilst reducing costs wherever possible. As James mentioned, our corporate support services contract review is reviewing the council's requirements for the services within the current contract, for delivery and implementation of an approved commissioning strategy for services from April 2024. We are working on the Business World redesign project, which we brought to you earlier this year and we've agendaed for later on in this year also, and references made earlier also to the Hoopel contract. We have the business support review project, as mentioned already, is paused in part to ensure the digital impact is aligned. Finally, the passenger travel review. As Debbie mentioned earlier, our communities want more options for travel and particularly green options, and this large scale project covers the business of the service with the first focus being around home to school transport and also the development of our bus strategy for Lincolnshire. On to the next slide please. We also recognise we have key cross cutting themes, functions and interdependencies of the programme, two of which we've already referenced throughout this presentation. Enabling technology, our IMT elements, which include rollout of Office 365, telephony, data visualisation and our future customer relationship management system. Our green master plan, which was agreed earlier this year, which is about supporting the development of Lincolnshire County Council's climate action agenda, which again has been referenced as key for our residents and our communities. And underpinning all of this, we're developing a consistent approach to managing change across the local authority. We could go to the next slide please. Ultimately, the aim is to enable all of us to deliver the best for Lincolnshire County Council and our communities. We may ask staff and members to actively participate in some of our initiatives through surveys and questionnaires and processes may change, delivery, delivering services to the community may change. We also know that technology will change and improve. We've also launched this year our change influence the network. So the network has been set up for colleagues to volunteer to, to be at the forefront of our One Council approach and to be local champions for our new initiatives supporting the Transformation Programme. We have representation across all levels of the council, in all departments and across the whole county. And that just brings us to the final slide, which gives you a contact for the programme management office, or if you have any other queries, please do contact me directly. We also have our hub on our Intranet, the Transformation Programme hub within the Intranet space, so please feel free to visit that and if you've got any queries on the back, do get in touch. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Great. Can we go back to seeing you actually, because that'd be good, I think? Andrew?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know you couldn't.
That's great, lovely. Okay. Anybody want to ask how we're going to transform the county council? Two people here who know more than perhaps anybody. Hugo.
Hi. Yeah, no, it's good. I mean, actually, it's quite good having a refresh overview, even when you've been on this committee for four years or so, because actually it does just sort of refocus the mind back to the sort of strategic, I suppose, vision really. I think in some sense, our challenge here is quite difficult, because it's a sense of, as from an overview, overview scrutiny point of view, is that we can get sort of like the traffic lights of green, red, amber, how well it's progressing and how it's actually coming on in the programme, but on the other side, is it actually fit for purpose? And that's often the hard part, to really decide whether actually what we are doing is better for the people or for the officers. Because often you don't get that fit, it's sort of that how you report of how we feel that it's, it's actually, we're on the right track. We might be 30%, 50% on target, but are we actually, is it right? You know, as I've sort of been and seen programmes over the years here, where in effect, they were sort of going to be the next Holy Grail and actually turned out to be and actually turned out to be really quite nothing more than a disaster. And I couldn't think of a few sort of programmes, I think North West or something was one in the past. But, you know, and it is, how do we really sometimes gauge that feel, I suppose?
That's a challenge of scrutiny, isn't it?
Yeah.
Would you like to comment about how the work that you do and the work that we do interface and we can hold you, in a sense, to account through detailed scrutiny?
That's towards us, is it, Chair?
Sorry?
Is that, that's directed towards that question, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes. I mean, engagement of all key stakeholders is always identified through each project and the programme at large. And that programme for engagement and the when and the how and the clarity around what we're asking those key groups of individuals, whether that's internally or externally, should be laid out as part of all projects. We also have, like I mentioned, our Change Influencer Group, who we take on new projects to, who we test ideas out with and we encourage feedback and for them to also come up with ideas for us as part of that Transformation Programme. So hopefully that gives you some assurance as to how we engage and we make sure that that's always part of everything that we do. And then that engagement would be tracked through project board. So it's not just about progress against key milestones, it is about progress around the engagement side and the feedback we get from that also.
Sorry, there is a point in relation to the question from Hugo, is are scrutiny committees, and OSMB in particular, because we're here, consulted early enough before the deal is done, as it were? If not, then all we're doing is really being the last poster, last opportunity to rubber stamp something. And I think Hugo may well be indicating that should there be ongoing scrutiny, just to test out where you're at.
I think certainly there's an opportunity in scrutiny to be able to, what our intention is, is to do that, I suppose, that progress monitoring with scrutiny, understanding where we're at within something. I think it's fair to say that generally in the past, I think not always been the best at checking those benefits have been achieved so that when we set out high-level benefits and detailed benefits at the start of a project, going back and really testing have they been achieved, whether they are within our communities, whether they are financial or non-cashable benefits, and really understanding the impact and making sure that it's making a difference. I think there's also got to have the confidence to close a project too, you know, once you start to get into it, start to do the detailed analysis to be able to step back and say, actually, this isn't going to work as we originally intended and have that confidence to make that decision. And I suppose it's that sort of information as we come to scrutiny on the reporting that we'd be keen to bring so that you've got the assurance of where we're going, how we're testing that and that things are still on track.
Anybody else wants to contribute? Tom? Sorry, Mark, over to you.
Thanks very much indeed for the presentation, which I found very interesting. Obviously, I guess one of the key drivers for all of this is to improve the efficiency and the effectiveness of the way we provide our services. And obviously, I would imagine that as part of that, a large element of it is going to be around saving overhead costs from the from the budgets, because obviously every pound we can save from overhead means we can spend a pound on frontline services. So I'm just wondering if, obviously, it might be difficult to give numbers, but I'm presuming as part of all the plans and the business plans for all of this, you've got some indication of the level of savings potentially you could generate from all of this? Because I'm very much minded, certainly in terms of channel shift, the way people access services. We'll give one example. Several years ago, I attended the CIFRA Local Government Finance Conference and one of the presentations was given by a resident from Hackney Council in London, who had had, I can't remember if he was KPMG or Ernst &amp; Young, he was one of the big accounting firms anyway, who had gone in and looked at the cost of services. And the figures are sort of, in stark terms, were that it costed out that every time a member of the public, excuse me, walked into an office at Hackney Council to access services, it cost about £14, because obviously all the overhead attached, you know, to provide the building, all that sort of stuff. Every time a member of the public kind of phoned in and accessed via a telephone line, a help line, cost Hackney Council about £4, obviously less overhead cost there. But every time a member of the public accessed a service online, cost Hackney Council £0.40, because obviously there's a lot less overhead cost there. So I'm just wondering, in those sort of terms, you know, that was just an example. So obviously, I'm just interested in the services. But my second source of question really is, obviously, yes, it'd be great if we could encourage, excuse me, as many residents as possible to perhaps access services via channel shift online. But I imagine that would be great for those people who live in an area where there's fairly good broadband. But I'm also concerned there may be barriers as to people accessing via channel shift. For instance, there may be an area, as I said before, where the broadband is limited. They may not be able to afford a computer or tablet or have access to. So therefore, potentially, you know, it would be very difficult for them to access online services. I'm just wondering if as part of this, we've got a backstop position for those residents who, for whatever reason, wouldn't be able to start to see the benefits of accessing some of our services online? Because obviously, you know, with most of these, I'm very much aware of the old 80/20 rule, that things tend to, depending on the population, what about the 20% where it doesn't? So that would be my second question as well. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Andrew, Claire, can you answer that briefly or would it be an idea to follow a previous example about answering it in writing and circulating it to everybody?
Yes, certainly we can do that. I mean, very briefly, we monitor all the potential benefits, whether they are, like I say, financial benefits, as you set out there, councillor, make sure we understand those, link those into our medium-term financial planning with finance colleagues and certainly when we're looking around expanding digital as a means to access the authority, see that very much as a blended approach, recognising those who struggle with those areas around broadband accessibility, affordability and such, that they can still access that in the usual ways, but creating those avenues for others to be able to access in new ways and then realising the benefits from that to go back into the council to invest in our frontline services, as you set out. But we can certainly provide an overview separately for the scrutiny committee to give a bit more information on that and what the current plans are around that.
That's lovely. That's lovely. Thank you. Yeah, it was my thanks, actually. Thanks without a microphone, but thanks for the presentation. Look forward to seeing it at a future OSMB meeting. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Look forward to the report. Thanks, Claire. Thanks, Andrew. So, to finish off this introduction to the Transformation Programme, can we note the presentation? Can we raise our hands to say that we agree with the presentation? That's for the record for the minutes for the next meeting. That's lovely. Okay, thank you. So, item nine, submission of application for funding to the UK Community Renewal Fund and Leveling Up Fund, an item for pre-decision scrutiny, okay? Justin Brown, Assistant Director Growth, will be on the screen. Over to you, Justin.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Now just check you can hear me.
Can you hear? No.
Now just check you can hear me and see me?
We can see you, Justin, but we can't hear you very, very well. I don't know if you can get closer to your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. So, thank you councillor Parker. And this paper is, as you say, prior scrutiny for a decision about two bids that we plan to make tomorrow. And I think before I start on the paper, I should describe that we do not routinely chase funding, but instead, where a grant programme gives us the chance to deliver something within a strategic objective, then we will seek funding for it. And the work we've done primarily through the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee over the past four years has really identified six priorities for growth and levelling up. So these are helping small businesses, supporting our most important business sectors, training in skills, helping people gain employment, improving connectivity and providing finance to small business. What we've sought to do with this particular funding programme is to deliver projects which meet those six priorities. So in terms of the paper, it relates to two funding programmes which the government have recently created and which are very short-term funding programmes. So the Community Renewal Fund is a revenue-based programme and funding for it needs to be spent by the end of this financial year, 31st of March 2022. So it's a very tight timescale. The Leveling Up Fund is slightly more generous, but because it relates to capital schemes, it is still a very tight programme with funding due to be spent no later than March 2024. So I think it's very important to recognise the issues of timetable and deliverability in terms of these funds. So in terms of the Community Renewal Fund, as I say, this is a revenue programme and the government have said that Lincolnshire can bid for up to £9 million. They worked that out on the basis of £3 million for each of their priority areas of Boston, East Lindsay and Lincoln. I do want to explain though that although the government have said that places can bid for £3 million for each of the priority areas, there are 100 priority areas in the country, so that would assume a budget of £300 million. The government's budget for Community Renewal Fund is not £300 million, it's £219. So therefore, we are working on the basis that we will try and bid for the full amount, but we recognise that there will be some competition and that potentially bids will be reduced by the government. Now, in terms of our bid for Community Renewal Fund, we have run a programme approach. We've invited partner organisations to bid for funding and the county council has also bid in its own right. And the programme itself is now broken down into business projects, which fits with what I was saying about small business, employment projects, place projects and skills projects. I've listed them in the report and as we make the bid itself, we create a very clear and compelling dialogue about why these projects will achieve outcomes. And I have people currently working on the bid, they're burning midnight oil and the early morning oil, and the bid we hope will be submitted subject to councillor Hill's approval tomorrow, which is the deadline. The second funding programme is called the Leveling Up Fund. It has two strands to it, one which is around place-based projects to be submitted by district councils and one which the Transport Authority can bid for. So as the county council, as the Transport Authority, we are able to bid for either up to £20 million or up to £50 million of funding. It is only exceptional schemes, by which I mean ones with a full business plan, a full cost of delivery plan, et cetera, that should bid for the £50 million. So from our perspective, we are looking to bid for £20 million, it's something like about £19.9 million, according to documentation this morning, for a project which will assist the growth of the food manufacturing sector in the corridor between Boston and Spalding. It has a number of components to it, all of which are schemes which the business community, the public and colleagues within other authorities have identified as priorities and which, most importantly, our transport colleagues have been able to assess are deliverable and will achieve improvements in terms of congestion. The final thing I would say about Leveling Up Fund is that it is a budget which in the scheme of transport programmes is relatively small. So it's about deliverability, it's about being able to be delivered quickly and it is our intention that that is not the only type of investment we would make in order to support the food sector in that Boston to Spalding corridor. So we are looking separately at feasibility work to tackle some of the greater congestion problems, particularly in Boston, including exploring two new routes to help around the town. So in summary, councillor Parker, those are the two bids that we are proposing to make. We've done a lot of work on them, a lot of consultation with partners and we are reasonably confident that those projects are deliverable, which is critical to this funding. So I shall pause there, councillor Parker, if I may.
Thank you. I think that's pretty clear, actually. I mean, we've got an agenda here, haven't we, essentially saying, do we support a funding bid to be made to government for these two schemes? Have we got any additional comments to add to what's already in the paper? Or alternatively, and it's very late in the day, given the fact that we need to put the bid in today or tomorrow, I think it's lunchtime tomorrow, has anybody got any alternative scheme? Now that would be throwing, you know, the hand grenade into a room, wouldn't it? But, okay, what do we think? Do we support it, two schemes? And do we want to say anything different, additional, add to through our local knowledge?
Councillor Wootton has a question, Chair.
Great.
Thank you, Chairman. It's not a question. I have read the report. Unfortunately, Justin, I couldn't really hear what you were saying, so I've read the report fully. And as the chairman of the Economics Committee, I fully support both these recommendations, Renewal Fund and the Leveling Up Fund as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Okay, we're a scrutiny committee, you know, the idea is it comes to us, we look at it and add our comments. I think the first essential one is, when we vote, is we're supporting it. Is there anything that we want to add, particularly through local knowledge or through expertise, that could add value to what's already here? Yep, Hugo.
Thank you. It's a good report. You know, I'm all for getting external funding brought into Lincolnshire. I take the highways one first, the A16 revamp, yes, it does need doing. In some sense, I remember when that road went in and I remember going down it for, and it was amazing. I mean, it got you to Peterborough a lot quicker. It was really good. And then, of course, we fall into that trap where we build on it, build on it and build on it and then bung it up, bung it up and bung it up. And it's in a sense, sometimes it's about having the, now we're sort of having to go for funding to alleviate issues that we have created, because we perhaps never, in some sense, we don't design things in a way for growth, we design it to solve an issue and then design it against solving issue. But still, we need to do it and it is good and that whole sort of A16 is the sort of, the vein of Lincolnshire, really. It is our one road that cuts straight through the whole of Lincolnshire from north to south. So, you know, it is essential that we keep doing that, but I think it's also essential that we do pay a bit of attention developing forward, that we sort of design things that we do pay a bit of attention developing forward, that we sort of design things in a way with, because we're going to get more, basically, it's attracting more people to come, the food valley and all of that. So that means more factories, more cars and everything else. So as we alleviate it, we should design going forward ways that sort of tap in better to stop congestion and try and actually keep us more freed up going forward. That's just a sort of a note going forward. I think the other area, the one area is we don't really know what each of the districts have put in, do we? There's none of that in the report, which is a shame because it'd been nice to have backed them. It does mention the eight point million that West Lindsay's put in for regeneration of Gainsborough, but Lincoln, East Lindsay and Boston doesn't really, I don't, I didn't see anything, I don't think, which would have been nice just to back them from an LCC's perspective. And I suppose my final thing is we've got all the areas that have asked for all the little bits of funding which is acquainted to just over nine million. I fully support all of them. Would I be able to tell you whether there was any benefit or where it really comes from? That I couldn't tell you, but what I really do think would be really beneficial is when they get, hopefully they get the money, that actually there is a really good intense follow up, so we really do understand, you know, rather than just always, because cash is going to get harder, I think, over the next few years because of Covid and payback and all the other bits. It will be nice to see how well people, these organisations have performed. They've asked for the money, we give them the money, we should start to check that actually their performance, they have done what they've said they're going to do. And I think that's a scrutiny role on a follow up of how all those areas have performed, that those that have asked for that nine, their bit of that nine million funding, you know, it'd be nice to see a sort of, that they are, they do what they've asked for and deliver what they are saying they're going to do, would be my only comment.
Fair point about building in feedback, providing of course we get the funding, that's pretty important. Anybody else want to make a contribution? Yep, Tom.
Thank you Chair, it goes back to what councillor Marfley was saying actually about how we, when we build infrastructure, how we plan or pre-plan. And I think actually that is almost something we actually need as a body, as a corporate body, to actually lobby government for and say, look, the way the planning system works at the minute is unfortunately, you're sticking a bandage on a gaping hole and patching something through that we're going to have to fix in a year's time. The best point is the New Eastern Bypass. Unfortunately, the government wouldn't allow it to be jewelled, so when it was built, it's already at capacity and it's only just been built and cost LCC and the taxpayer a lot of money. So I think actually as a body, we need to be lobbying government in terms of how the planning process and section one oh six works and saying, look, this isn't sustainable anymore, we need a, we need a proper solution to this because it's all well and good saying, oh, it's LCC's responsibility, well, we've had our funding cut for the last nearly ten years and we're being asked to do more and more. So I personally would support either the executive or ourselves or as a body lobbying, lobbying government, say that things need to change in the planning system because we can't be, we can't be asked to do more and more all the time because it's simply not financially possible.
Okay, point, fair point. Anyone else? Okay, one of the things that I think that we ought to be stressing actually is the point that, well, there's two points essentially, the first is that this is a partnership expedition, should we say, Lincoln Enterprise Partnership and other partners are involved, so I think we could stress that. And secondly, it's part of something that most local authorities are involved in, which is having an economic recovery strategy. So it fits to working in partnership firstly and it's part of a recognition that funding is needed in Lincolnshire as part of an economic recovery strategy. And those are the two things that I think that we ought to be asking the delivery of the report to be stressing. I don't know what other people think, other members. Operating on the principle of silence is a sense, you know, then I'm happy to move to a vote unless anybody else wants to make a final contribution or another contribution. Okay, so if we just go back to the recommendation that's here, one, that the leader of the council approves the submission of a Lincolnshire wide bid to the UK Community Renewal Fund in accordance to table one in the report, approves the submission of a Lincolnshire County Council bid to the Levelling Up Fund for transport improvements which support the growth of the food manufacturing sector on the A sixteen corridor, the point that was being made by Hugo, and authorises the executive director for Place to determine the detail of the final form of both bids for submission. That's what we're voting on, those in favour? And if I could just include the point about the emphasis that we're passing on to the leader about it being part of a partnership and also the recognition about it's a part of an economic recovery strategy, is that okay? Yep, can vote? Yep. Sam, thank you, that's good. If you're still there, Justin, thank you for your contribution, thanks.
My pleasure and thank you for your help.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item ten, which is the Covid nineteen update.
Hello, thank you councillor Parker, morning.
Morning. Welcome to OSMB Covid nineteen update, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. So just for new members of the group, we've been providing regular updates to OSMB for, with regard to our progress and issues around Covid nineteen. So the report presented gives the background since twenty second of February, which was the launch of the Prime Minister's roadmap nationally, and we have then set out our local arrangements based and aligned to that process. What I'll outline today is the progress and updates since the last report presented in April, and what we'll also do is kind of give people a view of how we'll move forward from here and happily take comments and questions on that. So as we're aware now, the government made a decision earlier this week to change the final step of the roadmap, which was planned for the twenty first of June to the nineteenth of July, and we've set out within the report a brief overview of the implications of this nationally. So that means that many of the changes that we were expecting back in the twenty first of June now will be postponed. There have been some relaxations around weddings and wakes which we've outlined, but there's still limitations on that with regard to the remaining social distancing precautions that need to be in place, the rule of six which results in only tables of six being allowed indoors, and also then the other additions that may or may not have implications for certain parts of the sector are the working from home recommendation is to be maintained and also the night time economy remains limited with no opening of nightclubs until that date at the earliest. This is a result of the increased concern around the Delta variant and that is in, as you will have read in the media, in some significant concern in some parts of the country. However, the, what we aim to do really is give you a flavour of Lincolnshire's approach and what our current position is. So in the latest data that we provide each report, we provide a summary to give overview and scrutiny management a flavour of the direction of travel. So what we summarise is the position since April it was reported and at the nineteenth of April, which is the last reported to this group, there was a comparison to the eleventh of June, which is the last reported data available at the time of writing this report. So as you can see, in April, we as Lincolnshire were at twenty six point eight per hundred thousand with regard to the rate of positive cases, and as of the eleventh of June, it was reported at twenty six point five percent per hundred thousand. As you can imagine, that fluctuates on a daily basis, so that is at that point in time. It is at a very similar level, as you can see, from April, and although the position did reduce during May, we did expect that rates of infections would increase beyond the seventeenth of May when we had our last relaxation of the Covid restrictions and more mixing in certain social circumstances. So what we've also set out just for the assurance is the, also the reported cases in the last seven days in Lincolnshire in April was two hundred and four in comparison to the thirteenth of June, which is two, which was two hundred and two. However, the picture with regard to reported deaths in the last seven days, his, remains a positive one in Lincolnshire with no reported deaths in the last seven days as at the point this report was written, and I do have to emphasise that, and that was on the thirteenth of June. So with regard to the number of Covid vaccines administered in Lincolnshire as of the twenty eighth of March, we've outlined that was five hundred and eight thousand two hundred and eighty, and as of the sixth of June, this was reported at eight hundred and sixty one thousand two hundred and sixty three. And within the report, that gives you a detailed breakdown of the age ranges and the take up of a second vaccine for those age ranges, which I won't go into any further detail unless it's required. And previously requested was a flavour of our surrounding neighbouring areas and their risks, the rates per hundred thousand, and as you can see, Lincolnshire is in a relatively positive position with regard to some of our neighbouring counties. So the data position is very similar to that of April, as I've said, which was props to be expected and that continues to be monitored. What we are seeing is the rates of infections are mainly in the unvaccinated populations and that tends to be the cohorts under forty years of age where they either haven't had any vaccines or they've had one. And as we know, we have now been requested by the government to offer vaccines to people over the age of twenty three as from earlier this week. So with regard to our current position, the intended timeline that we set out previously both to overview scrutiny management board, Loeb and also the Strategic Coordination Group, which is the multi-agency partnership group that takes responsibility for this under the Civil Contingencies Act, we've set out a timeline to look at our position and where we were with regard to recovery, and we set out three options, understanding that we were now fastly approaching the twenty first of June, which was to be the date which the government indicated would come to the end of restrictions. So on the tenth of June, it was intended that we would take a temperature check, a progress check if you like, of our current position and look at how then we may align or not to any national changes that might be implemented. And what we also did as, as things became clearer that there may be a delay, we set out an alternative timeline to ensure that we had full information available and consideration. So presented to the SCG on the tenth, what we offered to them was three options to maintain the current position and to proceed with the current arrangements but review a temperature check again on the twenty fourth of June in two weeks prior to making any further decisions on progress, or to proceed as planned and regardless of any national delays to the roadmap because our Lincolnshire position is positive one, or to reflect any national changes in the local timeline, to take in consideration and align to a national changes which would result in a transition into recovery from response fully as of the fifth of August rather than the eighth of July. The debate was taken round the room and a full report and data was considered, and we also presented a criteria that we would want to use in order that we transitioned from response into recovery. Those criteria are set out within the report and are very similar and aligned to those national ones. So our local position is very much that we have been mobilising and coordinating our planning and delivery of our recovery programme in order that we can be well prepared for a transition into our recovery, and we set that out against the four steps within the roadmap. And what we're looking at now is a plan and a decision on whether we move into the final step of our local arrangements, which would be oversight and assurance. So what we want to try and do now is set out to you the outcome of SCG. So they were supportive of that, that we continued, they feel our local position is very positive and that our vaccination programme is far ahead many other areas, and that's mainly due to the age range of the population we have in Lincolnshire. So many, much more of our population has had two vaccines. And what we are looking to do is now transition to our recovery position and take that to a decision on the twenty fourth of June, which would then mean our first recovery meeting at a strategic level would continue as planned on the eighth of July. In order that we can be forward looking, recovery is about forward looking rather than just looking at today and the near future, we have set out thoughts and a plan on how we would then exit from those recovery arrangements and to give overview and scrutiny management board assurance that we do want to come out of recovery in a timely way that ensures that our communities have confidence that we've made all appropriate arrangements and assurances in place, that services can continue and are in a sustainable way. So we have looked a forward plan from September and that would give opportunities for organisations that are key to our recovery, including health, business and economy, our education sector and our wellbeing sector, to come round the table and provide presentations at September, October and November, and on that basis, if they can give us assurance that there are no significant issues and recovery is well on the way, would form the basis of our exit planning. I'm hoping that gives overview and scrutiny management board a feel for where we are currently and our future plan to transition into recovery and also our exit arrangements that are now well developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, Covid nineteen, big issue, everybody knows about it across the country, here we've now been presented with details locally. Michelle's asking for contributions, comments, thoughts about the move forward in relation to the recovery programme. Councillor Dokes, Phil.
Thank you, Michelle, for the presentation and the update. Nationally, looking at the briefings that we've seen from Downing Street, et cetera, I understand that the Delta variant now accounts for ninety percent across the country of the infections detected. I just wondered what it is currently in Lincolnshire, what is our percentage, does that reflect the national, or is it not caught up with us yet, if you understand what I'm saying? Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, could you answer that?
I am able to answer that. From a public health perspective and the last briefing we received earlier this week, the modelling suggests that we are between fifty and sixty percent of cases in Lincolnshire are expected and anticipated to be the Delta variant at this time, so we are behind the national position.
Could I just follow up on that and saying, is it on an upward curve where it's expected to eventually or soon catch up with the national position?
Public health colleagues and the view of nationally is that the Delta variant will become the dominant variant at some point, it is just when, and it does tend to represent itself in the younger age ranges I pointed out into the report, that aren't vaccinated currently, which is why the vaccination programme is so fundamental to mitigating the risk to this.
Okay, thank you. Looking around, any more questions, any points anybody wants to raise about Covid nineteen? Last chance before August because I think you're coming back to us in August, but I'm, okay. Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate the updates, they've kept us informed consistently ever since. They've kept us informed consistently ever since Covid nineteen became a feature of the health of the country. And we look forward to the report coming back in August.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So we're agreeing with the paper that's being presented in front of us, we're noting it. Can we formally accept that, please? Thank you. Right, proposals for scrutiny reviews. Item eleven, a report from Nigel West, head of democratic services, inviting topics for consideration via scrutiny panels A and B. Nigel.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I mean, I'll take the report as read, but under the new council, we have some scrutiny panels, as you saw in that structure chart earlier, that delve into the detail of particular topics. And we have a new chairman and vice-chairman of the scrutiny panels. And this report is really to give you an opportunity to determine what you would like to, what you'd like those panels to consider. There are a number of ways of seeking those subjects for consideration of the panels, and one of them is for the overview scrutiny management board to have a view. Another one is for the scrutiny committees themselves to put forward subjects that they feel would benefit from a deeper dive, if you like, into a particular topic. But we have, in the previous council, there was a suggestion put forward that we have a look into the agricultural sector, particularly in the changes to the legislation that are in the pipeline. And that gained a certain amount of momentum, but obviously, coming up to the end of a council, a working group was set up and formed a potential scoping document, which is attached to today's papers, to give you an idea of the type of topic that could be considered. And today is really about finding out if you support that idea, to progress that further, now that we have a new council and new councillors, whether that still has momentum, still has that support of scrutineers on the council. Further to that, we need to consider, if we are, if you are in support of that project, that agricultural issue, what other subjects you would consider. And it may be that you want to ask the scrutiny committees themselves to put subjects forward for your consideration in the future. And really, there are a couple of suggestions, as well as the agricultural one. Town centre improvements, to consider what opportunities exist for the revitalisation, revitalisation of town centres around the county. And potentially capital programme planning. Bullet point two in the report, an assessment and challenge of the current capital project lifecycle arrangements and any lessons learned from major projects and how overview and scrutiny can be involved in the process. And Andrew might want to expand on that. But really, today is about seeking your views as to whether you think there's anything in particular that needs to be given to these panels to look at in the near future, or whether you want to ask the scrutiny committees themselves to come up with something. So that's my report, chairman.
Thank you. That's a good starting point. I mean, one of the things is that we've got these two panels. We want them to do some work. At the moment, we've only got one proposal. Okay, now, each of the scrutiny committees will have undoubtedly something that they want to talk about. And we've got all the chairs here, and we've got a meeting in two weeks' time, the first of July. Okay, so in a sense, it would be quite reasonable to say, can you all go away individually and come back on the first of July, ideally just a bit before, with some broad outlines? So that we've got, and they use the word competition, at the moment, the issue that we've got in front of us, as the only one, is on its own. And now there's a question whether we let that go through, you know, the farming sector, be with you in the technology, and that gets it, and then the rest of the ideas that come forward, fighting for the one place for the other panel, or do we postpone until the first of July and have a look at a bigger tranche? Now, I'm relaxed about it, really. But what I do think is that we ought to be able to come up with some issues, serious issues, that really will deliver through good scrutiny, improvements to services to the people of Lincolnshire, because that's what scrutiny is all about. So we've got those choices, and I'd welcome thoughts from all the chairs. But can we start with Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Joe. And I'm not sure if I'm entitled to speak at this committee.
You're very welcome.
But I will make a comment, if I may, on the agricultural matter. And I don't want to in any way interfere with my good friend councillor Woodton, who is now the chairman of the relevant committee. But I was on the committee at the time, and I did propose, I think I proposed the working group. We had people in from the NFU, as Ray will know and suchlike. And I've read a lot of paperwork this last week, since I've had this role, proper as it were, and I can't find the exact bit I'm after. But I thought the proposal for the analysis and the work on the agriculture and farming community was based largely on economic and environmental matters, which of course does fall within councillor Woodton's remit. What I thought was put forward at that meeting by the representatives of the farming community was the wellbeing of farmers and members of the farming community, particularly mental health wellbeing. And I thought it might have been an oversight, let's say, that that wasn't explicitly mentioned in the paper that I read. And so therefore, if I might gently suggest to Nigel and Ray, if councillor Woodton, sorry, if that indeed does come forward again, either to this committee or to councillor Woodton's committee, that that is specifically looked at, because the people who put forward the views were very persuasive, powerfully persuaded about the aspects of Brexit, stopping subsidies, various other things, and particularly on the mental health issues of the farmers and members of the farming community. I wonder if we could, in the report, actually write that, I know I've said that already, that we can write that down specifically, if you don't mind me saying, Mr. Chairman, to colleagues?
We're quite able to do a lot of things, actually, including that.
Sorry, Chair.
We're quite able to do that. Okay, the question is, let's get it right. It just seems as though we've got this window between today, the seventeenth of July, sorry, June, and two weeks later, when we meet on the first of July, to do some things. Okay, now, I'm not putting individual members of the, sorry, individual chairs on the spot, but would somebody like to say, yeah, we'll take this away and look at it in relation to, it doesn't matter whether it's health, adult, social care, children's services, highways, environment and economy? Because it would be better to have, you know, six or seven proposals briefly done, so that we don't have to spend a huge amount of time, but six or seven proposals, or even four or five, because at the moment, we're hanging just on this one, which, according to Hilton and rightly, perhaps needs amending. So, looking at chairs specifically, I can know Ray from vice chair. So, do you reckon anything for economy and environment?
Thank you, chairman. And councillor Spat mentioned something which I was going to speak about, was the impact of Brexit, particularly recruitment of foreign nationals to pick the fruit from the farms. But I'm also interested in robotics as well, because I remember going to an eco-site meeting where we saw a few years ago the developer of future robotics to be used to pick fruit. Now, that's progressed now, so I thought perhaps a project that you could look at, councillor Dylks, is the impact of foreign nationals not being here and the impact of future robotics to pick fruit.
Yeah, but I totally agree, and councillor Dylks is coming in next, but the point is, somebody's going to have to write a proposal. That's the point, because that's what's needed. And at the moment, we've got one substantial one, which we think needs amending, but are there any more? Sorry, you?
Could I just ask a point? I know these mics are not meant to be directional hugely, but if they're not close to you, I can't hear. I notice you can't hear, and I notice you were asking as well. I wonder if you could put your mic a bit closer to you to see if it makes any difference, please? Because it certainly does when councillor Woodton speaks. I was really a struggle to hear this morning. Thank you.
Apologies. Yeah, councillor Dylks.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman, and I thank Nigel for the paper, really, as a sort of a new member or returning member. After a gap, coming back, it's really useful to see how things have changed in the way that we do scrutiny. And I've got to say, it does appear to have improved a lot. Looking at the paper and the suggestion, actually, you know, there is that one suggestion on the agricultural impact of Brexit and et cetera, which, you know, I'm, I listen to Hilton, you know, I'm sure has merit. And there are also the other two suggestions in the paper, or mentions in the paper, about the town centre improvements and looking at capital programmes. Equally, I'm sure they have merit as well. But I just pick up what you said, chairman, if I may. You said, let's get it right. And I think, you know, as I understand it, these scrutiny panels are about doing deep scrutiny over a number of months, looking at things, you know, in real detail and coming back with meaningful scrutiny that can effect change and improve the way that we offer services. And so with that in mind, I would say, look, we're a new council, you know. We're not just a new committee here with some new members. I appreciate and respect the experience that others have got on here. But we are a new council, there's a substantial number of new members, you know, right across the council. And I just think it would be a, you know, that we should personally go from this committee, actually going wider to all councillors, you know, through email, and just sort of asking, what do, you know, what do all councillors now, six weeks into a new council, think that we should be looking at? As I say, I don't, you know, we've got those starters, really. But I do agree that I think we, you know, there are others that we should be looking at. And we should then be looking at, you know, in the paper, there's the prioritisation protocol, if I can call it that, that we should be looking at. So really, what I'm saying is, I don't think two weeks, two extra weeks here, you know, before we come up with, you know, the actual things that we're going to be looking at over a number of months is going to cost us a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to speak, Hugo?
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I mean, I agree, there's bringing back ideas for the, when's the next one? The first or whenever it is tonight, that you said, of other scrutiny reviews. The agricultural one, as it stands at the minute, I read this, and having been in agriculture and in the food industry, and I sit there and think, we are looking at what central government is funding to the whole of UK agriculture and going to scrutinise it, and that, to me, is rather pointless. Because I don't think you're going to get a lot of these reports about how much does the farmer get enough money? Well, actually, you know what? That's nothing we can necessarily do. It's going to come from central government. They will get their funding, and I know one thing, it will get reduced. So any farmer that thinks that it's going to stay the same, it might do for four more years, but it will come down. There's no doubt about it. It won't stay at the level of subsidies that are currently there. It will change in its format. And I go through the various things, and I think skills is obviously a key area. The other one is perhaps the biggest area is number five. But actually, because I sit on the food board as well for the LEAP, in effect, sustainability is absolutely key. And the reason why it's key for Lincolnshire is because of climate change and seventy percent of our agricultural land and our area is at flood risk from sea erosion and from coastal and from heavy flooding and all the rest. What we know is water is getting higher in some times, shorter in other periods. And so there was a great document called Making Space For Water, but we chucked those out because they weren't used at that point in time, five years ago. But actually, they are perhaps more relevant in five years' time. And the whole climate change, sustainability, and Lincolnshire and its landmass is something where we can influence greater to the likes of the Environment Agency and lobbyist and everything else. That will protect seventy percent of your farming community. So are we better looking at something like that as a benefit, rather than looking at, does the farmer get fair pay from government? Well, we're never going to be able to really influence that. And I think that's my worry, is that most of the points, I don't think we can really have any influence over or benefit from deep dive scrutiny. And that, I think, would be an absolute waste of our time and resources. I think getting it right, if you're going to do the agricultural one, you know, mental health, you could say, mental health, mental health is for everybody in Lincolnshire now. This is not just the farming community, it's everybody.
Honestly, I do appreciate your contribution. We're starting to debate precisely now.
So I think I would return this back. If it's come back, return it.
Eventually, though, this committee will vote. And we will vote on options A, B, C, D, E. And if this is option A, then somebody can amend it, propose an amendment. So we can do this properly and legitimately and democratically. At the moment, we can't, because this is the only show in town, and I'm trying to expand that show in town. So what I'm asking is, do we think as individual chairs of scrutiny committees that you can bring back one recommendation, sorry, one project, which is decently written, not just together, you know, not thrown together, for two weeks' time? That's the challenge, really, isn't it? Because we want to move on, but we want to get it right. And they're the two things that I'm particularly keen to make sure happens. So, Chair, the scrutiny committee.
Chairman, there's some reason why I might prefer you to go to councillor Kendrick, which is to speak, chairman of councillor.
Okay.
I reckon. That's the Marple, please. Sorry.
Thank you.
Could I indulge you, chairman, before councillor?
Bob wants to come, sorry, can Rob wants to come in?
Thanks, chairman. It just crossed my mind, and I certainly don't have the knowledge, that councillor Marple has regards agriculture. But I seem to recall James mentioning in his presentation some acts of parliament that were in the offing relating to agriculture. And I was just wondering whether that might actually complicate matters to do a scrutiny, a deep dive, as it were, when we've got these things in the background, which I don't know anything about them, to be perfectly honest, but they may actually complicate the issue. So I do think perhaps it needs to go back to the drawing board. And on the second point about as a chairman of a committee, I'd certainly, certainly go back and consider what we might bring forward as a possible item for scrutiny. Thank you.
Yeah, just from what councillor Marple was saying, sort of prompted the question, what is the difference between a task and finish group and this sort of, these scrutiny panels? Because there seems to be some sort of possible crossover between them, and that might be helpful in clearing my mind as to what highways might.
I think they're both the same. Another way of putting it, we would set a task to a scrutiny panel to report back on a particular subject. And the finish means that it's time limited, essentially. And the report that we've got here expects in relation to the question of farming to be finished by the fifth, sorry, the twenty-second of February. So that's the finish bit, and the task is we set them that work to do.
Yeah, so I probably not made myself very clear, chairman. A scrutiny committee can appoint its own task and finish group, yes?
No.
No, ah, okay, so that's fine. So I do have one, chairman.
It's an old-fashioned word, task and finish, which has been subsumed within a scrutiny panel.
I have been having a conversation with, sorry, Jackie. I've been having a conversation with councillor Davis as to issues coming out of the election campaign. And this has come from across the board, not just, if I may say so, from conservative candidates. And that is the question of how we deal with traffic management in terms of speeding, in terms of traffic calming. And councillor Davis agrees with me that perhaps our policies are way out of date and perhaps need looking at. And I was going to propose that the highways committee coming up in a couple of weeks, or next week, no, two weeks' time, that a task and finish group be set up to look at the policies that the council have with regarded traffic speeding, traffic signs and all the rest of it. regarded traffic speeding, traffic signs and all the rest of it, Chairman.
Would come here to be competed with in relation to other things. Okay. So, children's services, Rob, yeah, anything?
Not off the top of my head, Chairman, I'd rather go back and perhaps discuss it with my committee.
Okay, so are we moving, sorry, Mark?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr Chairman, if I, you just may give a bit of context, in terms of the agricultural one, I've been the sort of lead councillor under Martin, under councillor Hill for the last four years in the last council, lead councillor for the county farms estate, and certainly the impact of the agricultural bill that's currently going through Parliament could have a quite dramatic effect upon the county farms estate. The current level of subsidy that most farmers receive is about £85 an acre. Now, if you actually look at agricultural rents in Lincolnshire, certainly the level of agricultural rent that we charge out to our county farmers, there's an inbuilt assumption in there that all of our farmers will receive that £85 subsidy. The rates per acre, that certainly we charge our county farm tenants, range between roughly £100 an acre and £160 an acre as a rough average, depending upon the quality of the land. Now, if these subsidies are reduced.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mark, but you're going into a lot of detail, what I'm interested in is, is it part of, are you supporting the idea of looking at farmers?
Yes, I am, yes, I am, because, because, because I certainly believe certainly the implications of farmers losing that subsidy would have a big impact upon farmers' economic viability, and then on the wider economy of Lincolnshire.
Sure, so behind the scenes, you'll have an opportunity to influence people and move around and persuade. Jackie?
Thank you, Chairman, one thing I'd be interested in looking at is, and I think it's probably not for the first part of the scrutiny committee's work, is the way councillors' work has changed because of the pandemic. Now, we know that the officers are looking at their work and looking at the hybrid practices and all the rest of it, but it's made certainly a significant impact on the way I work, and I know it's the same with other people, and if not for a scrutiny panel, I think it is something that needs to be looked at because of cost, because of time saved, and has it had, you know, a positive impact on the way we're working. Obviously, we look at officers as well, but they're already doing that, I understand, but we're not, and so somewhere along the line, we need to be slotted in as part of a study to look at this, apologise for the way I'm speaking, I'm still numb, but if you could consider that somewhere in the scrutiny, it'd be great, Chairman, thank you.
I could return that and say, can you consider it? Because one of the points, before I bring councillor Dylks in, is that we have to have a deadline so that we can get a paper out that lists the draft, and I'm using the word draft, ideas that are coming forward, that need to be substantial enough for people to be able to understand and be able to make choices when we meet on the 1st of July between competing bids, that's the point. So, councillor Dylks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman, I mean, I think there are already a couple of ideas coming out, you know, the Bobs, for example, and others, I'll just pick up on Mark's point, if I may, Mark was saying that there is new legislation expected in the next year with respect to farmers, agriculture and Brexit, but when we look at the criteria from Nigel, on the protocol, it actually says, criteria for not considering topics would be, and point two is, new legislation or guidance is expected within the next year. So I take, it was councillor Kendrick, I think,'s point, you know, that's a specific reason why we shouldn't be doing it according to the protocol, I'm sure we can override it if we wish to. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Tom?
Thank you, Chairman, I would certainly support the comment that councillor Marple made in terms of mental health, because that affects everybody in Lincolnshire, and I know that we don't have a, shall I say carte blanche in terms of how, because there is interlink between the NHS and ourselves, but I think it's a very important area that, obviously, it needs more fleshing out than I can do off the top of my head at the moment, but I think it's a very important area, not just for a specific group of people, but across the whole piece, so that's children's services, that's adult services, that's the type of services that are offered, whether it, you know, type of counselling, therapy, whichever you wish to call it, I think that would be worth considering, obviously, it needs more fleshing out than I can allude to at the moment.
You could go to, Karl, actually, in health scrutiny, you could go to adult social care, you could go to children's services, so start lobbying is basically what I'm saying. Hilton?
I feel obliged to come back on a couple of comments, if I may, Mr Chairman, very, very brief.
Hope it's not detail.
No, no, indeed, it won't be in detail, I promise you, the evidence that was presented at that committee, we all know about subsidies being cut and all the rest of it, and we all know what the government role is on this, rightly or wrongly, I think rightly mostly, but that was specifically on issues to do with the farming community, and as councillor Whittington correctly says, the farming community is a very substantial community in Lincolnshire with a massive production in terms of food and local economy, it was speci, whilst I agree with my friend councillor Smith, of course, mental health issues are very important across the county, whole range of people, the committee was tasked at that time.
Can you just stop and tell me which committee you mean?
At that industry, that's what I wanted to say, Chairman, sorry.
Which committee do you mean?
It was the economy, I'm sorry, I do apologise, right, the Environment and Economy Committee at the time, and we had the meeting that I referred to earlier, before the lockdown last March, it was probably last February time, and I'm sure the minutes will bear that out.
I'm looking to the chairs to bring forward proposals, right? Now, if you want to change the one that's been brought under the auspices of economy and environment and economy, then you need to talk to the chair of the committee. Fine, okay, sorry, we've got a number of speakers, you've not spoken, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, just to add a couple of extra bits, if that's okay, so I think councillor Brockway's proposal sounds really interesting, and actually, the team would be happy to help flesh out that proposal, I think, both from a, like a personnel and Democrat, sorry, both, sorry, I thought I can get the feedback for myself, sorry, I think it was a really good proposal, and I think the team would be happy to help you flesh out that proposal, I think. I've had a text from our head of policy, so obviously Debbie referred to the new policy team, and they'd be happy to support some horizon scanning into this next paper as well, Chair, so I guess that alongside what's been brought forward by the chairs of the individual scrutiny committees will hopefully be useful, so we'll try and feed that in. And then I just wanted to make a comment about the capital as well that Nigel referred to at the start, so obviously, that was flawed at the pre-briefing, because it's something that's come up time and time again at previous meetings, but also like to just to reflect on some of the comments I made in my presentation too, that it's a, I guess it's an in train process, we're still making those improvements to the capital process, and indeed, the capital review group that I referred to still hasn't been through an annual cycle yet, so whilst I think it's something worthy of looking at, I guess it might be something that could come after some of the more pressing priorities as well, I just wanted to just to flag that to the meeting as well, if that was okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, everybody's had the chance to contribute, can I ask Nigel? Okay, Tracy.
Sorry, Chairman, just a couple of points of clarification, in relation to councillor Spratt's comment about mental health and the agriculture one, that is included, as part of the contributors, we're planning to speak to the, or would speak to the Lincolnshire Rural Support Network and mental health body, so that is within that, and in relation to councillor Adam, as we're talking about task finish groups, what the individual scrutiny committee can set up are working groups, so I think that's what you maybe are thinking of instead, is a working group that can look at a particular issue. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we've got a way forward, which I'll sum up in a minute, but I'm really interested in, when's the deadline for these proposals that are going to come forward, including amendments if necessary to the ones that we've had in relation to farming? And can we agree that it can be in draft formish, if we are to mean, so, to get this on the agenda for the 1st of July?
Chairman, the agenda goes out next Wednesday, so we quite quick turn around the terms of getting ideas together.
What do we think? Possible, because I'm looking to the chairs of the committee to do some work today, tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday, write something that doesn't have to be, you know, watertight and subject to, you know, detailed scrutiny, but sufficient for us to be able to distinguish the level of importance relative to other ones, because it's relative importance, isn't it? Because we could probably agree that all of them should be subject to scrutiny, but we've got to choose two. Is that okay, and does that sound an okay way forward?
Chairman, Miss Ayer would like to come in.
Alex?
I can't, oh, hi, it seems very quick that, you know, we want to, we want to work together and we want to put these ideas, and then suddenly it's got to be done within a week, I just wanted to make that observation, really, so that it can go on the next agenda.
Well, it's been on the agenda for, you know, previously, and what we've only brought forward is one, but there are, I am sure, potential scrutiny reviews that are available within different parts of the county council, I mean, I can't believe that this is the only one that we've got. What can you tell us, Nigel? What do you mean by, what can I tell you? It's a week. Hangover from last time, for start, but we've got one, but aren't people talking, officers, vice scrutiny committee chairs, about things that they would like to see? They would like to see scrutiny, it's not just being about OSMB, okay, and scrutiny committees, it's about getting into the culture, with everybody thinking about deep dives, that's the point, if you're not doing that, then in a sense you're failing collectively. Okay, now, I'm sure if I asked James about scrutiny opportunities, I'm sure they could come up then, and so would they, you know, while they filter it up into a system that we can, that's my question, it's a challenge, I just want to say that, but Karl, we've been patient.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, all I was going to say is, I think, as has been alluded to by councillor Dylks, we have got all new committees now, I think it would be right and proper to go out and speak to our committees as a new committee and try and gauge their idea, that wouldn't be possible, obviously, in the space of a week, but I think you would get a better context, speaking to those new members and have a right way forward, that would be my best way forward with it, because I think elsewise, you're not giving them the opportunity, we can criticise that perhaps it hasn't filtered through in the way that we would like it to have done in the previous council, we're into a new council, so let's go out, let's speak to our committees and bring these things forward, we can give them the ideas of what we think would work, but I do think we need then to come into that as well.
Okay, that would mean September, okay, now, if we're relaxed about this, as a committee, not just me or the vice chair, but everybody, I mean, what's the general thoughts? I'd be interested in councillor Dylks, because he's jumping at the bit of guests to get on with a review.
Chairman, sorry, can you put your micro, microphone, sorry.
So, do we go for September? What are the thoughts, I mean, just people given education?
We're going to have to get used to these mics, aren't we? I think, I think what it is, it's right at the start of the council, people are getting their feet under the table, and I don't think people have really thought about this yet, to be honest, because we don't know the interests of the new people, we don't, you know, they're not going to know the council, so I think the sort of almost non-response, it's not the usual enthusiastic response you would expect from us here, and I think, I certainly haven't thought a great deal about it, for which I apologise, because, you know, you're thinking about, I think, other things setting the council up, I think the best thing is to go away and people put their ideas in for you, because the one thing that we've got, I'm not thrilled about this choice, about this agriculture thing, it's interesting to some, I suppose, but it's very specialised, and I really would like the chairs, if possible, to go away and have a chance just to think for a couple of days, rather than say, do it now, when we may regret it and could have thought of something better, I will admit, I haven't thought much about it, and I wish I had now, so thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, I'd support councillor Massey's proposal that we delay things, because as we're all well aware, it's a new council, we've got quite a number of new councillors who have got something to bring, I'm sure, to the table, and I think it would be good to discuss it within our committees and come back in an informed manner, rather than taking something perhaps off the top of our heads. Thank you.
Any more thoughts? No? So, Karl, would you like to move what you did earlier?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, I would like formally move that that's the right route forward, and we go back, speak to our committees, and I actually think you may find that you get a better wealth of the different scrutiny panels that can go forward, instead of us here going around the houses somewhat, trying to come up with ideas that may not be what other members may wish to see, so I'd like to formally propose.
Okay, do we have a view about this particular paper that's in front of us in relation to, sorry, the NHS, sorry, the proposal that we've got for a scrutiny review, is that going to be consigned as well?
Can we not leave that on the table till September as well, Chairman? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, which is the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's more for advice, but surely the amendment would consign the paper in its current form, because that paper is saying that that review is taken forward, whereas the amendment proposed by councillor Massey is that we wait till September, that proposal can come back, but would not need to be on a new paper?
And we can take a standing item to the scrutiny committees to ask for their input to that paper in September. Okay, so we're all clear that we're shelving this, and I use the word nicely, until September, and ask for lots of thinking to go on with each committee, scrutiny committee, bringing us a recommendation for them back? Are we clear about what we're agreeing on? Sorry, Phil?
Yeah, Rob, I just wonder if we could just sort of add that, you know, this committee is minded to make a decision in September, rather than let it rumble on any further? Does that make sense?
If that makes you happy and everybody agrees, yeah, minded to decide in September, okay? So we know what we're voting on, those in favour? Those against? Fine, we've got progress, okay? Proposed, proposal for the scrutiny review, item 11, done. Okay. If we could just move on, excuse me. Item 12, updates from the chair of the scrutiny committee, and this was put on to give an opportunity for everybody to have verbal updates about what's gone on, I mean, we've only had probably a month or so since the council, since the council met, sorry, the elections, so, anything that anybody wants to contribute for the benefit of all of us? The first one on the list would have been Hugo, anything next, children's comes next, Rob, anything for you to say?
Yes, thanks, Chairman, obviously, this is sort of historical to some extent, because we're in a new session, but over the last year, the Children's Young People's Committee has been very busy, and obviously, we're looking forward to a new term with some new members, so it's going to be some changes there. The things we've been looking at include the Building Communities of Special Provision Strategy, which is one of our main considerations, the strategy was approved back in November 2018 by the executive, and the implementation of this strategy commenced in January 2019, and it runs over five years, with the final school changes being made in September 2024, and the decisions for the capital appraisals and changes to special schools are now making their way through the committee, and we're considering these as they come up, and over the last 18 months, we've considered capital appraisals for Boston Endeavour Academy, which is a brand new school that's being built, the Willoughby Academy in Bourne, the Erresby School in Spilsby, and St Berna School in Louth, there's quite a lot going on there, and also, we've got coming up, appraisals for St Christopher School in Lincoln, Prior School in Spaling, and St Lawrence's Academy in Horncastle, and we also get in October every year, an annual report, which sets out the progress of the strategy and the capital build programme, which is significant, and obviously, subject to Covid restrictions. obviously, subject to COVID restrictions, we're hoping that we'll be actually to visit some of the schools where the work's being done. Hopefully, the brand new Boston Endeavour in September, all being well with COVID. Other matters we're considering include the Children and Care Transformation Programme. And we received a report at our March meeting setting out the progress and the six work streams for that programme. And we will be receiving two reports at our meeting in November in relation to the Children and Care Transformation Residential Estate Programme and the Wickhamby Children's Home, which are for pre-decision scrutiny. And that's one of the important parts of the work that I regard as very significant, is the pre-decision scrutiny work that we do on our committee. We continue to scrutinise the work of the Lincolnshire Safeguarding Children's Partnership through six monthly updates that we get for that one. And we're going to get an introductory presentation from the LSCP at our first meeting, which is on the 25th of this month, with further updates following on this year in November and April next year. And that has representatives from the Office of the Police and Crime Commissioner, the NHS Clinical Commissioning Group, who attend to present their views on those matters. And finally, we will continue to monitor, and I think this is sort of a fairly hot topic at the moment, monitor the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on children and young people. It's been widely reported in the media. And this is in especially relation to the effect on their education. And we will also receive the Children Missing Out in Education Annual Report, which is, comes out, as it says, every year for 2020/21 at our January meeting. And also, a report on the Lincolnshire Local Authority School Performance for 2021 at the meeting in March next year. Obviously, information on exams will be missing because we've not had exams this year, but obviously, hopefully, when things get back to normal, that will also form part of the work that we do. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the report. Thank you, Rob. Okay. Anybody want to ask anything? No. Can we then move on to Nigel? Nigel Pepper and Communities and Public Protection Scrutiny.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just as an update for yourself and the rest of the committee, the Public Protection and Communities Scrutiny Committee has already had its inaugural meeting. It was on Tuesday of this week, whereby officers introduced areas reporting to this committee, namely public protection, communities, corporate service, and the Fire and Rescue Service. I think what I'll do next is just give you a brief overview of the items anticipated in the 2021/22 work programme for the Public Protection Committee. It will consider pre-decision scrutiny reports on which the committee will make recommendations to the Executive. These include community strategy, Coroner's Services update on the transformation project and potential merger with North and North East Lincolnshire, and also outcomes from the Technical Response Unit Provision Consultation. In addition, in the 2021/22 programme, members will review, amongst other things, and I'll just pick out a few, in July next month, we've got the performance of the Library Services Contract, year five review, doesn't seem that long, but it is. In September, we've got the Integrated Risk Management Plan for the Fire and Rescue Service, 2020 to 2024. November, again, I'll just pick out one, we've got the Community Hub Five Year Update. December, Road Safety Partnership, we've got the Road Safety Partnership Annual Report, and I'll just pick out one for January, that's a Trading Standards Annual Update. Lastly, the Public Protection Committee also sits as the Crime and Disorder Scrutiny Committee, and as such will receive updates from areas such as domestic abuse, stay safe, Section 17 Crime and Disorder Act 1998, prevent, annual update, and modern day slavery, annual update. Chairman, that concludes the very brief overview of the work programme of the Public Protection Committee.
Thank you, Nigel. Any comments? No? If so, can we move on to Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee, councillor Watton?
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. As I'm the new chairman of this committee, I'm very fortunate to be supported by Kiara and Nicholas from our democratic team. So really pleased to have them on board. I've met yesterday virtually with our officers. We intend at future meetings to hold virtual agenda-setting meetings and pre-meetings to make sure that we not only save transport, but also contribute to the overall economy. Our first meeting is due on the 22nd of this month, which will be an informal meeting virtually, but then followed by our July meeting, which will be a face-to-face meeting in this chamber. There's 20 subjects down here, which I'm not going to read all the subjects to you, but I want to point out one of the ones which I think is very interesting, and that's, again, has been mentioned already this morning, is the impact of COVID-19, but on the high street in general. And another subject we're looking at is the litter and flight initiative, because that's becoming a really big problem in the county. Later on in the year, we'll be looking at the Green Master Plan and the Humber and East Coast Strategy. But further on programmed is the Skegness Business Park and the Coastal Car Park Strategy. Now, that seems to me, seems very interesting. I know Karl would be interested in what we have to say about that. But overall, again, Chairman, a very interesting agenda. Looking forward to chairing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, is that a okay report? Fine. I've got a note, actually, that councillor Paul Skinner is on, was supposed to be online. Can I call in councillor Skinner to deal with flood and water management?
Good afternoon. Obviously, you can hear me. I'm getting a bit of feedback, but thank you for inviting me. For those who don't know me, I'm councillor Paul Skinner. I'm the chairman of the Flood and Water Management Scrutiny Committee. Rob Reid is my vice-chairman. And our scrutiny, for those that don't know, meets four times a year. What I'm going to do is a brief overview of what our anticipated work programme is. The committee hasn't met yet. It's actually due Monday next week, on the 21st. And this meeting will serve as induction, aiming at introducing members of the committee to the service areas reporting to it, as well as to introduce our partners and members. Now, this scrutiny is a partnership scrutiny. It's about the Environmental Agency, the Anglin Water, our own services, and even the Internal Drainage Board, all working together to provide solutions to flood and water. Throughout the year, the committee is expected to receive reports on progress update on the Development Fund, drainage investigation, flood repairs. And for those that remember, the Executive last year decided to boost 2.2 million into flood investigation repairs. And the scheme of work is actually between the floods team and highways, because they're very definitely connected. So the next item would be funding for riparian rights and responsibilities. Most of us that live in the more rural areas, this is a regular feature queries to our mailbag. That will be in September. Emergency planning, response and coordination, emergency planning and business continuity, there's a report due September. In the environmental, sorry, economy report you just received, we have coastal adaptation strategy. The Environmental Agency will be reporting back to us on that in November. Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue, new pumping equipment. Obviously, if we have a flood situation, equipment and availability is very important. That's due to come November. And a property level resilience trial project, an update in February. There are some other items, Chairman, that I hope to include, but I need to get those worked up a little bit more. So that concludes the overview of the work programme. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks. Is that okay? Yeah, lots of interesting stuff, seriously important, water and flood. So if we move to health scrutiny and Karl?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We're due our first meeting next Wednesday, and the agenda was issued Tuesday of this week. We have five substantive items on the agenda currently, and I would like to highlight two of them. Firstly, we have United Lincolnshire Hospitals' NHS Trust, as it is consulting on a proposal for urology services. The proposal means that patients with urgent urological conditions requiring hospital admissions would be taken to Lincoln County Hospital. Currently, patients may be admitted at both Lincoln and Pilgrim. In turn, Lincoln would see a reduction in the number of patients seen on a planned basis, as more patients required planned care would be treated in Pilgrim and at Grantford. The report on the agenda has more detail, and the committee will be responding to the consultation. The second item to highlight is paediatric services at Pilgrim. In August 2018, an interim service model was introduced at Pilgrim for paediatrics as a result of both medical and nursing staff shortages. This model introduced a paediatric assessment unit where children and young people would be treated and monitored for up to 12 hours. After 12 hours, any children requiring further care would have been transferred to Lincoln. The report to the committee indicates that over time, the model has now evolved so that children and young people may be treated for up to 24 hours as part of the short-stay paediatric assessment unit. The committee will be giving its view to ULHT, which is seeking to make this arrangement more permanent. There are seven new members of the committee, and I intend to offer them scope to influence the content of the committee's work programme. However, I understand the NHS at a national level is expected shortly to sign off the Lincolnshire acute services review, and I've been advised that a public, full public consultation could begin soon and would take a lot of our time on our agenda, possibly even from July onwards. So I'll have a more further update for you at our next meeting. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Karl. Appreciate it. Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee, last but not least, Bob.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Very briefly, we have our first meeting on the 28th of June. The meeting cycle will be every six weeks, so we will be meeting seven times a year. The main items coming up in the not-too-distant future was the update on the gully cleaning repair and surface water flooding, which ties in a little bit with councillor Paul on his flood-water risk. There's a pre-decision scrutiny in September for the winter service plan, which will deal with all the gritting, et cetera. We will have a further update in October from the engagement with network rail and train operating companies. That's been going pretty well over the last couple of years. The local transport plan will come back again in October. And finally, the one on the agenda is, as well as the Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership report going to councillor Nigel's committee, it also comes as a sort of courtesy report to highways as well, Chairman. Very brief.
That's fine. Don't worry about the briefness. Highway scrutiny, we've had that. Any questions? Anybody wants to raise? No? Okay. Nobody wants to speak? Fine. Can we move then to agreeing and noting the verbal updates from the Chairs of the scrutiny committee? Just indicate with your hand if you're happy to accept. Thank you. That's agreed. And then the final item on the agenda, okay, is the overview and scrutiny management board work programme, which is Nigel to work on.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, just briefly, the work programme is set out in the papers. Just to highlight, 1st of July is the next meeting, obviously in a couple of weeks, when there are at least four pre-decision scrutiny items on that agenda. Then there's a break, if you like, until the 26th of August for this committee. Again, straight back into pre-decision scrutiny, where we have, there'll be three items on that agenda, four now, on the 26th of August. So yes, it's a busy, very busy programme, as you can see. I don't know if anybody's got any questions. This is usually attached to the papers as an item for noting. But one of the things that we have picked up on in the last few weeks is that we are going to reintroduce those updates from the Chairman of the scrutiny committees on their particular programmes. We did relax that for the last six months of the last council, sorry. But that'll be reintroduced so that chairmen have that opportunity to let the board know their programme and what they've got coming up in the near future. And so there will be a sort of quarterly invite for each of those chairmen to come to the committee to update the board. And that's it really, Chairman. I don't see anybody's got any questions.
Anybody want to raise anything about our future work programme? If not, then can we agree the board's work programme set out in the report and the additional scrutiny activity? I think we can say that we can bring that in some detail. So we have a final item now. So can I propose that the work programme is agreed?
Can I just close the meeting by saying thank you for your patience? These meetings are not normally, for anybody who knows, this long. We had four major presentations, which we won't have again. That's not to say that they were not worthy. And we had discussion over the question of scrutiny panel work in the future. But I wouldn't think that this would be a typical meeting for those people, anyway. But thank you for your attendance and your patience. Declare the meeting closed. Thank you.